Roll call please.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Luna Leo?
Here.
Councilmember Beck?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Therk?
Here.
Are you ready?
Here. Okay, all right. If you would please join me in the optional pledge of allegiance for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to which stands one nation, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you. Uh, looking over our agenda today, Councilmember Hill, I hope you approve. And unless there are any big changes to it, I would entertain a motion.
Best move is to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
To be consider some discussion on PB Swims' letter.
Uh, so what I'm going to do is read that into the public record for Jane at the public comment. I've already spoken with her about that.
Okay, and then will there be follow up with her answer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, now we have, uh, public comments about items not on the agenda. I know many of you are here for the presentation for the advocates. That is really early on in our agenda and I'm gonna ask if you are here to comment on the advocates' presentation that you wait for that presentation, we'll, we'll, we'll have them present and then we'll take public comment on that specific issue. Okay? So if, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda in the room? Elaine, you go back to it first. Step up.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Kent. The director of the PB Board with the SWIM Board and, um, I thank you for allowing me to speak. PB Swims came to you last summer to ask for your help to get a small 25% sales tax on last November's ballot. With voters' approval, such a measure, we could show on our grant applications that we have citizen support and further justifying our request for money to restore. Your message last year to us amounted to get all your ducks in the world first. Now, all of our ducks ran a rung and we're waiting in the gate. We submitted our first version of the necessary documents to the city clerk on May 1. Our problem seems to be that there are a couple of gatekeepers who won't let us through. As time is of the essence, these delays are a great cause of delay. We have to play with the signature. Our attorney, who has much experience in municipal law, has given proper documents that by state statute need only be cleared by the city clerk. Instead, upstairs, where multiple objections were found multiple times. As our attorney has pointed out, none of the objections were valid. It feels and looks like a delay. As our attorney has, uh, why would or should the city employee try to bring citizens back? On, on, uh, citizens initiative on the ballot? Well, just asking the citizen's opinion. And in the verdicts, who will be certifying the signatures if we get our petitions? Since we're losing our steady heat, hopefully, presumably, it will not be the gatekeeper. Perhaps the county clerk can help, I don't know. I realize that it's not customary for you to respond to citizens' comments. But if we have to wait until our next meeting, two weeks, to hear your reply, we're gonna be in the time box. Not of our own making. If you are willing to discuss this at the end of tonight's meeting, at the agenda, we'll be your answer question. Um, as a registered voter and as a group of registered voters in Leveville and the state of Colorado, we have a constitutional right to petition. How can you, as the city council, see that we are granted this right? Thank you for your consideration. Very important issue for citizens.
Thank you, Irene.
And Ms. Kent, how can I get with you after the meeting as well? Well, you have to be saying it, but it's like.
So, so we can't add like a council discuss, we can't add stuff onto the agenda after it's been posted. But I will say, the city administrator and I have spoken, I've spoken with Jane Harrelson today and so we'll be, uh, we'll be meeting outside of the meeting to address some of these concerns. Okay?
I will, um, if we could allow Susan Fishman to be in here. Even though her, it's on the agenda. All right, that's okay with you, man?
Um, so Susan is homesick, I'm really sorry, Susan. We're gonna make exception so you can go back to bed.
Well, and go to, actually go to another meeting, this was double booked. So, I, I appreciate it and I'm gonna keep it to three minutes because that's about all I have for my voice. I, um, I'd be there in person if I could. Um, my name is Susan Fishman, I live at 612 East 11th. I've been involved with the schools for 22 years, St. George Community Meals and Pantry for the past nine years, helped start the homelessness committee and residents for responsible development. I'm sharing this because I've watched the housing market for many years and seen many angles of our current housing crisis. I kept data for several years on how many housing requests we received at the church. I am so grateful to Kristy Galarza, who has twice responded to my request to organize the community around housing issues, specifically the homelessness and Leveville 7. And we are so lucky that the advocates of Lake County saw this need and expanded their mission to include homelessness and in a very short time, the Bridge program is up and running. I have four points I would like to make. First, I would encourage city council to support the requests being made by advocates to help build the fund to support our residents who are housing insecure. Second, I would like to be part of the solution and I know some other homeowners who are also willing to help. Thank you first for considering increasing the density requirement in the city so that smaller lots can have ADUs that can help create more long-term rentals. I have two ideas around this. I would like to put a tiny home on my lot specifically for someone who is unhoused. We currently have 10 vouchers for permanent supportive housing. However, we lack housing and landlords that will accept these vouchers, which are below what our rental market is supporting. I am willing to make a capital investment specifically for the voucher program. However, the voucher requires being connected to sewer and water, as I believe does ADU regulation in general. I would like council and other entities to consider helping financially with tax fees for homeowners adding an ADU specifically to help the homelessness or local rental situation. I would propose a loan program where homeowners would pay the city back after, or other entities, after they have recuperated the cost of the ADU. Obviously, there would need to be some details worked out, but as an example, in my case, I'm looking at tiny homes that cost under $30,000. So it would only take three years to recoup my investment at $900 a month. Another idea is to use a piece of county or city land for another space for wheeled units, since wheels are not allowed as ADUs. This could offer very affordable rentals. I don't know all the regulations around this, but as you begin your master planning process, which I understand is starting this fall, I encourage you to consider a place for wheeled units. Everyone is working on affordable homes to purchase, but in my humble opinion, we urgently need to increase affordable rentals. And that brings me to my final point, what is really affordable? I want to share a story from the schools. There are some positions that are currently filled with long-term substitutes. I was helping in one of those classrooms and now, is it time?
It's time.
Okay.
Can you ask?
Oh, yeah, I will, I'll send this to all of you. Uh, but I just wanna say, I'm scared for our schools, our unfilled positions and people experiencing housing security and I encourage local government to be part of this solution, thank you.
Thank you.
God, I practiced and it was in three minutes.
Huh, get better fast. Okay, bringing it back, I think Nancy, your hand was raised. Step up, tell us where you live, you got three minutes.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Nancy Bailey, owner of, uh, Leveville Exchange and Family Shop here on Harrison Avenue. And with me, Christy Vogon, with Hannah Benziner, the company here in, uh, in Leveville. So, good evening, everybody, we're here with exciting news, actually. We've had a change in leadership, friendly after many years, uh, in Chamber Commerce. Um, I am, uh, I was elected in May as their, as their interim president and previously here as my secretary, uh, the secretary, the board secretary. In November, we will have a meaningful election. Um, and right now, uh, actually, I don't know if many of you know, but there has been indeed a board for up nearly a year. Um, and it consists of the same kind of four, four people with the exception of the, uh, past president Tracy Burden. Um, she has stepped down, uh, and, um, we will be moving forward with a reimagined Chamber of Commerce that I think we can all be proud of. Um, so we just are here tonight to share that information. Um, you know, we, I don't know if you guys know this, but Lake County and Leveville was the pioneers of chambers of commerce. Uh, we were one of the first to create a like-minded organization before Denver Chamber of Commerce. Um, our Chamber of Commerce is over 111 years old. Uh, that heritage is important, uh, in our state because we were the first chambers in, in the United States, although chambers started in other countries, um, before the state did, but, uh, we're just, uh, here tonight, let me see, I got some whole points. Um, you know, a lot of people, and we're gonna, we're gonna launch a communication plan and you will be seeing us, a lot of us, and will be asking for a lot of information, uh, you know, in, by way of, um, food meetings and, and other types of communications. Um, so, uh, one thing, you know, the chamber is a trusted source of information collected by the business community for municipalities to make informed decisions, right? So, um, you know, case in point, you know, over the last, since November, um, you know, I've heard a trend of businesses that got a decline and, uh, 30%, 20%, these are alarming numbers. Um, and that may, they're all reasons for it, right? But with the Chamber of Commerce, we can come and inform you early on because there is such an egregious delay in, in, uh, sales tax reporting on the state's part and that's not your fault, we, we understand that, so let us fill that gap, right? Let us help you, um, and inform you early on some of the indicators so we can create things like grant relief programs and offer, you know, uh, to, to, for layoffs, like I did in my past, uh, life at EDC work is, uh, is a layoff version program where you proactively go to the business community and say, we're noticing a downtrend, how can we help you? Um, so those are the types of things that are coming, including business after hours. Um, here's what we're asking of all of you, we're not asking for money, uh, we won't be anytime soon. Uh, we're here for your support, your buy-in, um, for us to look in the rearview mirror and for us to look forward and really collaborate together and work as partners with the city um, and our county partners and all the business community, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nancy, it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Can you both give me your new contact information for the chamber?
Yes, I'll be happy to, all right.
Great, thank you both, very nice.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, please come up.
My name is Steve Preston, actually, we're on 21st Street, it is just past the 10. I don't think I can appear and say things I don't want to say. Um, I want to try and make a statement that this is like getting in, I don't see, I mean, hot landing zones, I wonder. I thank Tim for getting a chair here because I need to solid here, but I still maintain my, uh, request that do not vote on things, uh, that pertain to me because, uh, I can't make a case about that. The same for Joey Edwards. Um, so, scurrying past that, right, quickly, uh, I guess that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other items not on the agenda that someone would like to comment on? Okay, I, uh, we all received an email from Jane Harrelson, I spoke with her today and told her I would do my very best to read the letter into the record, um, in three minutes, so. And she understood I might not be, quite be able to make it, but I will try. For, uh, those listening, CRS in her letter refers to Colorado revised statutes, it's a statutory city and so we operate under the rules, um, outlined for us by the state. Uh, Jane lives somewhere out on Rafferty, I don't know her exact address. Here we go. Dear City Council, our legal counsel is in receipt of the deputy city clerk's second and third rejections of submitted forms of citizen-initiated petitions pursuant to section 3111106 CRS. The rationale of your denials does not comply with the statute. To be clear, the petitions submitted are for a citizen initiative to propose a new tax and structure to operate and maintain an aquatic center. This is not a referred measure from the city council and it is not a citizen referendum petition to challenge prior city council action. These distinctions are important as you have relied on statutes that do not apply to this type of petition in each of the deputy clerks' three denials. I will address each of these statutes you have cited in your rejection. You have rejected each petition in part because you believe that the city drafts the ballot title pursuant to section 311111 CRS. That statute does not apply to a citizen initiated petition. Section, that same section applies, quote, "after an election has been ordered pursuant to section 3111104 or 3111105," see paragraph one. No election has been ordered pursuant to either of these sections. In fact, neither section applies to the citizen initiated petition at all. Section 3111104 applies to referred measures or measures referred to the electors by the legislative body. While the city council could elect to send a proposed new tax to electors, making it a referred measure, they have not done so and section 104 does not apply here. Similarly, section 3111105 applies to referendum petitions. Referendum petitions seek to overturn ordinances passed by the city council either by voluntary council action or by an election. The rejected petitions are not referendum petitions. In summary, no, quote, "election" has been ordered pursuant to section 311104 or 311105, close quote. And section 31311111 does not apply to the petition submitted. The city does not in fact draft the ballot title for a citizen initiative and this basis of petition rejection is in error. You also rejected the first petition and in part the second and third petition forms because you stated, quote, "the clerk's summary is premature, shall be prepared by the city clerk and will not be provided until the petition is approved as to form." See section 3111106, 3B. Subsection 3B applies to a, quote, "summary of the proposed initiative or ordinance that is the subject of a referendum petition," emphasis added. Again, this is not a referendum petition and the subsection does not apply at all. The city and the clerk have no statutory authority to draft any portion of the citizen initiated petition. This basis of rejection is in error. The difference in the second and third petitions is limited to whether the petition has drafted summary of the petition included or not. For simplicity of the remainder of this letter, I apologize, Jane, I did my best. I'm gonna leave this letter up on the dais for anyone to review, um, after the meeting and maybe we could stick it into the minutes. Okay. Okay, last call for public comment for item not on the agenda.
Fine, word.
Yeah.
You said putting that in the minutes, we definitely put it on page eight, uh, the, the record of the next city council meeting.
I don't know where we would put it, how, how would we post it? In.
Uh, different cities have different policies. Some cities have a policy that they won't accept written public comment, that you need to show up in person. We've decided that we do get so few letters that we would try and read them into the record and then if we couldn't read them into the record, we would just include them in the minutes so someone could review it in, in its entirety. I don't, I don't know of any city that would put it on the agenda for the next meeting, I have. So we can try this, see how we go.
Um, and if anybody wants a copy, since it was read into the record, I'm happy to provide it. Okay, let's move on. We have the consent agenda, this includes the Resolution 29, which is the resolution of the city of Leveville adopting an updated fee schedule for the city and Resolution 30, a resolution whereby we approve, uh, the contribution to the dark skies research with the CMC student, we'll be collecting light, uh, for sky quality, um, meter readings. Do I have a motion, or does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda, first of all? If not, I would entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Edwards moves to pass agenda.
Thomas seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all were in favor. All right, let's move on now to presentations and discussions, let's start with city administrators' report.
Okay, uh, maybe I'll just start with some of the more complicated topics are streetlights on Harrison Avenue. So you might notice that a number of them are out. Uh, the bottom line is it is not a simple fix. So, we've had pro-elector come out a number of times and look at the wiring for those poles uh, and it, it could be that all the wiring needs to be redone, uh, and/or most of the wiring really needs to be redone, but I wanted folks to know that we've had our streets department looking at those lights and pro-elector looking at those lights for probably since before the snowplains went up. Uh, in, in part because they are older and we are looking at, I think, pretty, a pretty significant cost to get them repaired and or replaced. So what we're waiting on right now is just, uh, an initial idea from pro-elector regarding the repair of your existing system. We're in the alternative, a replacement of the existing system, whether it's electric, wired electric or solar. So we have been trying to fix this issue for a while and I, I, I think we've, I've mentioned this in prior meetings, we were trying a solar version of the streetlight out in front of City Hall and that, of course, that would never be easier because we don't have to redo the wiring in solar. What we found over the winter was that the light went completely dark. It did not get enough sun when there was snow on it and so that is kind of a concern with solar lights. And so we decided that that particular solar light, light was not a good fit for us because we obviously couldn't have all the lights out on Harrison Avenue. So I just want you to know, we are working on this issue, we're trying to get some preliminary ideas. I just want to give you, I'd like, I'd like to give you all a heads up when big ticket items might be coming. Uh, this might be a big, big, big ticket item. We have, I think, uh, $30,000 in the budget for this purpose, but if it is a redo, all the, um, electrical and all the poles, it does require, require digging up the sidewalk and then, of course, a lot of those poles may need to be replaced when we do that. Um, as our, someone pointed out, they are kind of, they do get rusted and deteriorated, which can virtually, I guess, because dogs feed on them and it corrodes the metal. So, some of them may need to be fixed, I wanted to give you all a heads up because, no, there's been a discussion about that. It is, we, yes, we did in fact read the snowplains up in this box to provide light in areas that we were having problems and then we have been working on it. It's just, it is not a simple fix, if it was, it would have been done. Uh, that, uh, let's see, oh, uh, easy stuff. Uh, Linda Misha's firm wanted me to remind the, um, city council that your next floor of board meeting is June 6. One thing you will be seeing coming up probably in the next couple of council meetings is the renewed intergovernmental agreement between the city and, um, the Leveville Urban Renewal Authority. Um, we have been working on that, it's probably gonna require a little bit more work before it's ready to be sent back to Linda Misha's for review, so. Uh, but they wanted me to remind you about that meeting. Uh, let's see, Third Street Parking Lot, so if y'all are familiar with it, we do not allow parking overnight in city lots. There has been some historic parking in the Third Street Lot by tenants in an adjacent building. Um, that really has caused issues with the plowing of that lot overnight in winter and then just the lack of availability of parking in that lot for the public because they are public parking lots, so, um, we just want to give a heads up, we will start enforcing some of that overnight, uh, no overnight parking because, uh, the lot is just isn't available as much as it should be for, uh, the public. Let's see, a couple other updates, um, our current deputy city clerk Hannah Shear uh, is leaving us as of tomorrow, she is moving back to Denver. Uh, we are sad to lose her, but, uh, we also understand that sometimes, uh, mountain life can be more difficult than, uh, urban life and she's decided that urban life is a better fit for her and so we wish her well. Um, right now, our Sarah Bushman has been training to take over some of those duties. We did have, um, our, the position posted, last, Hannah's position posted last week and I, or even maybe, yes, I believe last weekend, it will close this Friday. Um, we already have a couple applicants for the position, so we're hoping to fill that position because it is a very important, uh, position. And we just, uh, thank Miss Bushman for stepping in for tonight's meeting and, um, at being willing to procrastinate on a number of the duties, so. Um, testament to her, uh, being a key player. Let's see, um, I did get an update from our recruiters at KW. See, uh, they have, they, so our postman for the police chief position went out on May 23rd. It closes on May, no, June 28th. And, uh, the, the recruiters have received a number of applications so far. They put into their proposal, you may remember, they're going to rank the candidates that are applications they've received in a tiered system so that we can decide, uh, more efficiently which people we might want to interview. Of course, it's up to us, the bill put forth their tiered, um, recommendation for us and, uh, then we can make the decisions on who we want to interview. Uh, I, I think I mentioned to you, the town of Eagle was recruiting a police chief just recently within the last few months. Uh, they have some excellent candidates, some of those folks were not selected and so I've asked, they reach out to, uh, one of those candidates to see if that candidate might still be interested. Obviously, it's just to find out, you know, if they're should engaging in the process. Uh, and, let's see. Uh, I think those are the main updates, I'm happy to answer your questions.
I've got a couple, do we still have an opening at the animal shelter? Somebody left the animal shelter, right?
Uh, we, um, yes, actually, we are, uh, human resources director and I are going to be doing some interviews next week for a kennel pack. So that's the entry level positions, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, you mentioned the parking lot at Third Street and we've had a couple of inquiries about ADA parking in the very city lots. Did we hear back yet from our contractor?
Yes, and I will not, I've learned to not steal thunder from any of my department members any longer. I, uh, Jacob is here and our planning director is here and you, do you want to just do a brief update on where we are at?
Yeah, sure, uh, mid-April, our consulting engineer, uh, group, our associates, provided us same plans. Um, they, uh, there's, uh, we're certainly doing on this property ownership for one of those three sites from those three parking lots, the parking sign, Western Hardware. Um, so we're, uh, looking into that and then today our setup updated, um, same plans for the parking, sorry, for two of the, um, two of the lots. And, um, me and the insurance parking manager tomorrow, um, to pass the same checks.
So, so we are adding ADA spaces or adding them to, okay.
Yes, starting and restructuring adding these spaces, this is all going to be discussed. It's just.
Okay, great.
The way we have, just. Two of the sites, two of the parks.
Okay, and, uh.
Okay, and will you reply then to the county who's been making inquiries about?
Yeah, so yesterday.
And then the last thing, I'm curious about Lori, I think because I walk by it every day, 809 Spruce Street?
Yes.
It looks like it's had a lot of rehabilitation renovation work going on, and curious about that.
Yes, I think I mentioned maybe in a prior meeting or this one-on-one with some council members, feeling the city has been the Bellagio lately with water leaks. I am not kidding. I, it is crazy. So the 809 Spruce, it started with needing to replace the washer and dryer, and when they pulled out the washer and dryer, it really just more complicated and older homes, that's all I'm going to say. There was a water leak that happened when the washer and dryer was pulled out, and then there were two more subsequent leaks unrelated to any of the prior leaks. So there was a leak in one of the pipes that leaked into the kitchen area, and then after that was repaired, there was just a leak that happened in the shower in the upstairs unit. So all, as we believe are unrelated, just happened to happen all at the same time. They are, I asked for an update from our parking manager today, just as the status that, so. There were a few people who needed to move over. I think there was one person who needed to relocate the room out of their room just for the repairs, but the repairs are underway. There may be delays slightly so one person can move out without disruption, but they're happening as quickly as possible.
And do we know is insurance going to cover the cost?
Yeah, well, we put in claims for that as well as the leaks of the payment home. So we'll just see what, yeah.
Okay, and I guess more generally, I'm just curious about, you know, trying to think about housing in our community and how difficult it is to provide affordable housing to people. And I know that 809 Spruce was meant to be part of the solution. And so with Hannah leaving one tenant now, I just
Oh, well.
I wonder how much the city has spent to provide affordable housing for two people.
Well, so I did get an update from our property manager. So the postal service worker moved in and was there for a period of time, was able to find housing that was more reasonable. We're kind of, I think, at the policy street where we're trying to hurry up and get some of the rooms available because we actually have, I think, more demand from a city perspective than we thought. So we actually could have put one person and potentially another person coming up into the house had we not had the rooms down for water repair.
City employees?
Yes. So our new police officer was at Hostel and has now found temporary housing, but would like to actually be at 809 Spruce. But we can't get him in yet just because there's not a place. And then there's potentially one other city employee who would be interested in how many we're just at a place where I am trying to back the property manager of what rooms we have available to offer to these folks.
There's a potential question.
You know, even though I transferred, they, I'm talking about the possibility of doing a master lease, which I didn't have an objection to, we asked their attorneys to send us a, and I don't know that we've So, I mean, at this point, we could have had more people in there had our issue. And at least one, potentially. And then we have had requests, we have had a number of requests for various children's houses at 809 Spruce, and I've tried to become as a tenant in there, but it is not necessarily for like a day or two, or for folks. It is more permanent. We've made a few exceptions, and there's a possibility we might make another exception, but I want to be respectful for the tenants that are there. You know, we've had a lot of requests for, we need somebody to prepare our house for, you know, a day or two, and we haven't done that.
Other questions? Let's see the administrator.
Lori, I remember the discussion about the KW Police Chief search, and we got some feedback that we needed to increase the salary range. The salary range that was posted did seem quite a bit higher than everything else discussing. Can you share a bit about what that process, that decision was?
Sure, and I recall our discussion was that, in fact, we did discuss where Eagle was, because that was one of the most recent local areas, and we knew we're not able to match Eagle. But there, I think their Human Resources Director sent around afterwards, that their salaries were 146, maybe average 136,000. And we knew we weren't going to get up to that pretty. But the, one of the things I said was we would get with KW to figure out what their information might be for what salary range should be. And so that was my question to them. I had, when I had my one-on-one with them, I said, what do we need to do to be competitive? And, you know, they said, well, what can you afford? And I said, you know, we're not, we're not able to do anything, you know, essentially, I think, 130 to 140, and they said, you could, you could, you could get a good candidate for that. And so I think what our point was is that we, we want to have a good candidate. I understand that this chief coming in had a lot of responsibility, and so this is what we needed to do to be competitive.
I have a serious issue with that. That was, I understand that we had initial discussion, maybe it was at the one meeting I was present for, which I apologize, but doesn't feel right to me that a year-to-year change is made without a more depth discussion about what that looks like in the police department budget, long-term, past this year, because that person presumably is going to continue getting paid back from that, which in effect would increase our police budget by fifty to sixty thousand dollars year-over-year, depending on what, which one we go with, which to me doesn't feel, doesn't sit well with me that that wasn't a more in-depth discussion with the council. And again, if I missed it, I apologize.
I would like to jump in here, and I'll be talking about this more in my mayor's report, but the short answer is, council does not have specific control over salaries.
Sure.
We have a twenty thousand foot view of the budget for each department. We have estimates of what they will spend, but occasionally, mid-year corrections are necessary in order to achieve the ultimate goal of the provision of services. Will we be talking about this at our budget sessions in October, November? Absolutely. But other than informing of kind of where things are being concerned, the salaries are set by the city administrator in conjunction with HR Department and the Finance Department, and looking over the overall budget and the city finances, and how that can be impacted or absorbed is our responsibility on an annual level, but we don't get to set salaries.
Oh, that's fine. I have no issue with the salary being set at a certain point. It is more so the lack of communication of what into it from my perspective.
I think what we were told upfront is that we would receive, actually, they would receive advice from KRW and make a decision from there. The, I know that you feel stung that you heard it in the paper first, but the nature of our council meetings is that we get to have our city administrator report twice a month, and you can have, you know, Gloria's generously made the monthly meetings with council members of that report, if you like.
As I have every single month. But more so, I still take, I still take issue with this. I still think that there's still room for discussion just because we don't control one person's salary, nor should we. I agree with that. Doesn't mean that there isn't a long-term discussion as to where is this budget going? How big is it going to get? And those discussions can have, coincide with a police chief discussion. It doesn't necessarily mean that I get to say, hey, no, I don't agree with this, and it doesn't happen regardless of what my feelings are. Obviously, you all have authority of that. I don't. But it does mean that it is my responsibility to make sure that we're not just making these choices that puts us in a situation that with it long-term, I have no control over saying, well, now we're at a one, we're at a fifty, sixty thousand dollar increase on a police budget, and there's not much we can do do about that because this decision was made before the annual discussion.
No, I appreciate, and I appreciate your, your, your voicing your concern about that. I think part of our twenty thousand foot view is to evaluate the finance report that we get every month from the, from the HR, or excuse me, from the Finance Department. That is our input, where we get to say, whoa, why is this going over budget? You know, how are we going to absorb that? The answer of how are we going to absorb that falls back on the city administrator. And then we tackle it again. We will be dealing with this, for example, with some of the water leaks, whatever isn't covered by insurance. These are unexpected or unplanned for expenses. The police chief was a planned for expense, just put that in there.
Yeah, that's what took issue with it because it's planned for expected expense. I understand that the plan also was to increase it, and the initial discussion was, from what I remember, much lower than 130 and 140. And it going up to the 130 and 140 is what set off the red flag for me without being curvy to that. And, you know, if it came for the page, my apologies. I have a limited amount of time as to what I can do, given that we're very part-time city council, and if I missed that, my apologies, but it doesn't sit well with me that that still wasn't even at least, hey, that's a, this.
I I will say that the salary range was not a single individual's decision.
I would expect it not to.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
I have another question.
Yes, go.
And have we used, engaged the sheriff at the IGA yet and and used those services, and if so, has it gone?
We just got an email this afternoon that it had the IGA been approved by four county commissioners. And so my understanding is, as of tomorrow, the shift coverage will fall under the IGA.
I don't, I actually don't doubt that it'll be much different than it has been. I, I don't, you know, the, our vision of paying for those services is really truly the only change. Well, we have been working with the Sheriff's Department to get those services previously. It's just that they weren't being the opposite. The system in itself is not that much different. I think the only change being that we were going to share a have a shared calendar for the scheduling, where we actually, you know, like a Google. I don't think that we currently do that, but that's the only functional change.
And it's ready to cross the finish line.
Sometimes it just takes persistence.
Okay. Other questions for the city administrator? Okay, then let's move on. We have a presentation from the advocates.
Do you want a public comment to follow?
Personally, I think that would be more effective because then we'll have your information also first.
Neat. Sounds good, please.
Hey. Hi, everyone. My name is Jenny Abbott. I'm the Executive Director of the Advocates League. And this is, I'm Erica Dusky. I'm the Program's Machine Ability Manager with the Advocates. And we just want to thank the staff and the council for taking the time tonight to speak with us. People leave is a very huge issue. You're very, very grateful for your time. We, unfortunately, I was having some tech problems, so we couldn't put this out nearby. I will forward it later, will you have it completely forwarded? It's a pretty simple slideshow, though, so we miss you much in the meantime. And that's why I took this up.
All right, yeah. Okay, so I'm just going to give kind of an overview of what the advocates have been doing and some of the background into the issue of housing insecurity and homelessness in Lake County. We began our bridge program this year, and that has really emphasized the need for more and more funding and resources to support and hopefully solve this issue. It, at this point, is a public health, we're at homelessness in our community. We know that it's hard for people to find housing here. There's limited outports available. Rent costs are super high. Lake County, as of 2022, ranked the highest in Colorado for cospered renters. So that means that you're paying thirty percent or more of your monthly income on rent. So sixty-two percent of the county was cospered, and when you include, you know, grocery costs, the high cost of living, it's a lot, and it makes sense why people need housing services. At the bridge right now, we've had twenty-five clients, or one household, if it was one or mine. You'd say twenty-five households have been enrolled since our enrollment form went live five weeks ago, and we now have a waitlist because we can't fully serve everyone due to limited resources. We know that homelessness looks a little different here than bigger metro areas. We know people are often doubling and tripling up in small housing units, sleeping in cars in the warm months, camping. People have been sleeping outside even in the winter. The Lake County Build a Generation led a twenty-time campaign in September with a bunch of members at the Homelessness Committee, and that showed that a hundred and fifty-four people were either doubling or tripling up, sleeping in vehicles, or just on one given night. So we, we can clearly see the need of our community is outpacing our resources, but we have been able to implement some strategies that you can see on the slide. They've been effective for what we can do with them. We use our homelessness prevention that can be eviction prevention, rental slash utility assistance, helping people apply for benefits like SNAP, C4s, energy bill assistance, really whatever you can do to help stay in their housing. There's also crisis response. So that can be emergency hotel stays, just getting people out of the cold and elements, and we're safe, addressing immediate food, clothing needs, all of that. And then more long-term solutions, we have some transitional housing units at the bridge. There are currently six people in transitional housing, and so they stay with us for a thirty-six month period, and we're getting people off the street. And all these people that we have in transitional housing right now were either address homeless or were homeless at that time. So the space, a long-term housing goals, housing vouchers are another long-term solution. The ultimate goal is that everyone can attain and maintain long-term stable housing. So the strategies are working, but we happened to say no to four people within the last week just because we don't have enough resources to help them, and that included a mom of a two-year-old who was affected. So, a big need. Next slide, please. Here's kind of some background into the community collaboration that has surrounded this issue. So back in 2022, local service providers like George reported an increase in service for food, emergency shelter, and that inspired the Lake County Homelessness Committee to form, which brought in consultants to do an outside needs assessment, and that confirmed this upward trend of people needing services and lack of available, and it was a major contributor to that. Then from the needs assessment came the strategic plan, which identified gaps in services and things we're doing well when it comes to those three. And prevention, and also emphasized the need for one agency to take its own as a primary function, and so AOP has done that. We've proven as a coordinated entry point for homeless and housing services in our community and have a robust All of the factors you can see in that strategic plan. So we've done a lot. We know what we need to do. We know all this is evidence-based work. We just need to figure out how we're to keep doing it long term. Next slide please. Okay, so as Emma mentioned, we've been doing a lot of work. Couple of years now. And what you have before you there is the strategic plan that the CBA funded. We all have to generate. So now the question is. That's really the stage we're at right now. We we have what's really thoughtful consideration into how do we address this problem in our community? And we're at the half stage, which is really exciting. This is quite small. This is taken from a study by some sociologists who looked at the rates of increase or decrease. And the change of homelessness with government alone, which is that solid line, or nonprofits alone, which is the. The other line there, the line dipping downwards shows that when they are both. Governments and nonprofits, that the rate of change plummets, it goes it goes down in a in a good way. The homelessness is going down. So that tells us, along with just conventional wisdom, that we really need to be doing this together. There we go. There's another really cool graphic there. And I apologize, it is pretty small, but basically we're looking at a social sector infrastructure. So in in our community, historically, the nonprofits have really done their thing and government has done theirs. But really, when we're looking at a problemless complex homelessness, we have to start working together and putting our heads together together. And rating our efforts in a way that really reflects the the work of our partners. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about that. First, I wanted to look at, and this is just a snapshot of some of what ALC has been spending money on these past few years. And I want to mention that our other partners in the room and on the call have similar statistics. So here you see the rate of change for just our agencies spending on just hotel rooms. What had a hundred and seventy-eight percent change between between twenty-two and twenty-three. And I think it's two forty eight, I can't quite see the mirror, between twenty-three and twenty-four. Our twenty-four numbers are projected based on our current rate of spending. But you can see where we are spending a lot more money as just one agency addressing this. Just for emergency shelter, just for putting folks up into a safe place there. The same, as he said, for our rental assistance spending. Again, we have these pretty dramatic increases year over year. And we're currently applying for more rental assistance. So this thirty-three percent change between twenty-three and twenty-four is likely to be much. At the end of twenty-four, if I couldn't say that for something at this stage. Um, next, and that's a three percent of what we're about to talk about next. So how are we paying for this? How are the nonprofits paying for this? This is an example of just one study of many that. Demonstrates a very serious problem in the human services sector, getting reimbursements from the government. We are received in receipt of very large government grants to provide new services, federal and state. Usually federal trickle-down programs to the state and we're super grateful to be in receipt of those funds. But the reality is that because of delays, we are often. Waiting for reimbursement that are just not coming in a timely. And you know, that's that's not your problem necessarily, right? That's that's bigger government. But it is still affecting us very significantly on the local level. Next slide please. So. Focusing just on number one there. What is our request of you? And this again is work for ALC's members advocate study. But really, we want you to be considering that we are representing all the service provider and nonprofits in the county. We're standing here right now. And we're all experiencing these same challenges. So collectively, we are hoping to get a financial safety net. From the city of Leadville in through an ongoing budget line item. That would be an ongoing live source of support for the service providers. Helping homeless and housing insecure families and individuals in the community. This would not, this is gonna be separate from requests for funding that you may see see later from our partners. This would be our safety net pool that would be administered by ALC or by another nonprofit with with a. Pretty robust finance department, so ourselves. And it would be available if we're experiencing something like in the slide I just showed you where. The average was a hundred thousand dollars that nonprofits were waiting for their reimbursements to come in. It comes down to K roll and we unfortunately experienced this recently. And we have no way to pay the employees who are working extremely hard to serve the Leadville residents. We would be able to to go to a safety net that was created by our locals. To help us through those hardships. So there's a tying gap that this would address. Usually related to reimbursements or this thought of one funding program and start. So you know, it could be, we need to hire someone and this candidate wants to start earlier. The grant doesn't start in two months. That would be another. Acts for this fund. Also programming. So a lot of our government funding, the foundation funding is very restrictive restrictive and clearly concerned. But we also have families in need who just fall through the cracks. And as Emma mentioned, we're working together and we're trying to figure out who has what and what purpose. There are still cracks. That would be another. Use of this safety net. Our request, our collective request for the homeless services, service providers would be a three hundred thou-. Three hundred thousand dollar line item in your budget. I know we're a little premature coming to you with this. Just to get that pool started. And then we're gonna talk a little bit more about what that. In just a second. Quickly though, the number two ask would be to offer assistance with logistics and operational needs. You guys are already doing this for us and we're so grateful. And we had donation of bump beds from Badamans Bruce earlier in the week. We were able to put those bump beds into the transitional housing unit and literally had a bed suddenly for someone who do not have a place to go. And that was because the city of Leadville just reached out and said, do you want this resource? That was amazing. That's exactly the kind of thing we're looking for. Poor Chapin has sat through meetings with me for two years, brainstorming solutions. And we're just so grateful for those types of support and collaborating with resources. So more of that. Now jumping on to number three. Join us at the table. So we are at the point where we. We need to do more work, like the type of work that generated this strategic plan. So we have a lot of new partners at the table who are doing this work. And local government comes as they can because you guys are stretched too thin. What we're really looking for is a very regular and consistent representative. Serve as a conduit between the nonprofit community and local government. Sit at the table with us, look at grants that are only available to local government that we we can't access as a nonprofit community, but are so important. So for example, the county applying for Dola grant for formal housing. That is that is serving a very population, but that is just a little too high. Area median median income eligibility than the services than the folks that we're trying to serve. So something similar for the homeless in an extremely low-income community is in order. And we really need our partners in government to be sitting there with us and looking at these solutions. So that's really the ask tonight. These three things, we we are asking for a collective safety net to help us. Not to be the primary source for these services, but again, just to help us, the service provider community, when we are having these struggles. And getting the money that we have been awarded into Leadville. Number two, offering assistance with logistics and operational needs. City Leadville is very doing that. We're very grateful. Number three, really coming to the table, doing some think tank. Type project, project around how to solve it. Because we can throw the Band-Aids at them while they fall. We also need to contemporary basically be working on logistics solutions in this community. And so. All of it. And and that really is the act and that is our question for you all to consider in. At what level do you think it's appropriate for you to step in? And that's that's it. And we're just gonna open up for questions, comments, or thoughts?
Questions?
I've got a couple of questions. Does the advocates do anything with respect to homelessness or intervention? And I heard you talk about rental assistance. Other than that, anything for prevention or is that beyond the missions of the organization?
Yeah, yeah, there there's more we do even in our survivor program. We'll meet with landlords and help help find. Figure out something that works for them because a lot of the issue is just being able to find something in the first place. But I'd say the bulk of homelessness prevention for ALC is rental utility assistance, eviction prevention. You know, working with landlords in that navigation. And and I can elaborate on that. We do have from Dola, a firm of emergency solutions grant. Very small pot of money for homelessness prevention and some of the activities imagined by that grant include helping someone pay for medical. Heat up their rotation or it's pretty broad and then it allows the case managers to sit with the clients individually. Look at the whole picture, say what is preventing you from paying your rent this? And try to intervene and do some diversion before it gets to that point. And and that is, or sorry, for homelessness prevention. Under the meaning of the grant and the grant, if you see anything of it, it's just that we don't have enough.
And then my other question was, we talked a lot about government and nonprofits. Is there any private sector partnership that you try for?
There's definitely room for for the private sector to join as well. I think. We have a great local example. And I think if if we could apply that same type of energy, that same type of out-of-the-box thinking. Again, just to the folks who have an even lower. But we're hoping that again, in this task force type environment, we're all sitting at the table, that's that's exactly. That's really what we want from you guys, is to be there, part of the conversation so that we can broaden our scope. Okay, great. And as far as like other private after entities, we partner with a lot of. You know, hotels, local landlords, do master lease agreements. Like there are people in the community who we consistently work with and we know we can.
Other questions?
You. You made this presentation. Or planning on making this presentation and slash ask of.
Yes. Yeah, we are just getting started. And honestly, this is our first, it's our first go at it. It was really hard for me to make this a short presentation because there's a lot of really cool work being done. And analyzing how to do this, these partnerships most effectively. So when we finally do that. It should, I it'll probably have that engraved a little bit more. But yeah, we're we're not just approaching.
Other questions? Other questions? Can I go ahead?
What is your goal for that safety net fund? Is it six hundred thousand? Three hundred from us, two hundred from the county or?
That's a really good question. So three hundred would be sort of the speed amount that we would. But again, the task force, that number three, coming to the table, would be looking at the looking at the need for that safety net going first. So doing some forecasting, seeing if we even need that to be bigger, paper to be a little bit smaller. And that those questions would all be entertained by task force sitting at the table. But for this first year, please. The need is just so great that we just, we need something in place and we need it in place quickly to our programs or friend. And that's like a really solid way to get started. It's a really good question.
And are there grant opportunities that. Require local government matching that those funds be leveraged?
Yeah. So we get that question a lot. The Advocates of Lake County, like a lot of our nonprofits. Have been reliant on foundations and federal and state grants for so long. The funders are starting to ask that. Where does local government come into that? You are literally serving their constituents and we're not seeing. We'll give letters of support, very grateful for the letters of support, but they're starting to ask for more. They wanna see that local government is aware of the problems. That we're addressing and is in support, is supporting in any possible way, efforts to serve their constituents.
I have two questions. One is, pardon my ignorance on this, but. With the homelessness task force that that you've discussed, how is that? Different or is than the homeless subcommittee under the housing commission?
Great. I think it's on the last page of your strategic plan there. So if I don't want to speak, I mean, I'm just. But Build a Generation. That's their gig. They get, they raise issues, they gather support, they get something rolling. And then they're not service providers. So if what they get rolling is a service. Then that is their natural trajectory is to hand off to service providers. So that's really where we're at. Is we are starting to, the subcommittee basically has evolved with the changing need, which is that now we're at the place of doing, not thinking about. And so then when I spoke with Carly about it, Sailor, who's their executive director, and she's like, it feels like the right time to. Transition into. Similarly themed gathering, but more service-oriented, more focused on what's what we're actually doing.
Is that the task force, the the task force of the service providers?
Well, would it just be service providers? So and it is quite complicated. So the service providers are already gathering. Through coordinated entry case management meetings and they're literally talking about individual phases. We are asking for government, our government first to sit down with us and the hospital and the private sector. And be looking at, again, that twenty thirty thousand foot view, like. More oriented at long-term planning and keeping services.
My other quick question is, how many clients can be accommodated at the bridge?
And so the program itself is really as much as we can do. So we have three case for case managers. We have our. Director, who is your very own Tim Bets, Bridge Director. We have two case managers, one focusing on street outreach. So really. Doing outreach on the street or in our case, the woods, and bringing folks in for services. And then a coordinated entry advocate who is Todd. And so those are the folks for doing case management. It's really a function of their capacity and the cash flow. We are turning people away. Because we just don't have the cash flow and that's our reality. We've been promised the money, the money's coming, but demonstrated that it's just not a perfect system. So we're hoping to serve.
I guess, I I'm sorry, I meant like. How many could be accommodated at the transitional housing?
In the in transitional housing.
But thank you for the structure right down of that program, which I also didn't know. I think you can.
Yes, okay. So i- if you mean the facility itself, the, the upstairs facility, um. You know, given how many bunk beds get located, uh, potentially eight to 10, possibly even more, but. For, for the purpose of transitional housing specifically, packing them in isn't really the right strategy. Um, we, um, we also rely on other aspects of transitional housing. I see Paul Mueller here. Uh, runs the Abbey. He gives us discounted rates on, um, long-term stays. And that's the other aspect of transitional housing, which costs money. We have to pay rents.
I was just, really just asking about the building.
Would you like to?
Yes, but not right now.
And we'd be happy to offer maybe a tour if you want to come over and see the apartments, um. And see what's happening in that safe. We don't have the confidentiality, confidentiality concern that we do with our stream of survivors. Which in this case is.
Okay, last questions from council. Thank you so much. I'd like to move on to public comment regarding the advocates' presentation. Here is what I would like to do. I don't know if you guys want to self-select if comes up first, or should I just start pointing to raised, I'll start pointing to raised hands. Please come up, introduce yourself, tell us where you live and you'll have three minutes. Okay, who wants to speak?
Hello, my name is Amanda Fitzpatrick. I live at four twenty West. Um, and I work for the. I'm here to write, comment in support of the advocates of Lake County as they seek this assistance. I have lived and worked, worked in Lake County for three years, partially working in direct service. They've seen how many Lake County residents are impacted. By rising housing costs and how one bad meet can cause families and households to suddenly be unsheltered. I am extremely lucky to always work for organizations that pay me fairly and to a found a landlord that charges me reasonably and afford me. But without both of these factors, Lake County residents are faced with housing instability and the uncertainty. Luck like this should not be the difference between sleeping in a sheltered stage space and. Additionally, even with luck like that, a lot of unforeseen circumstances like this. Sources or roommate leaving out, child being born, an illness, a disability can all suddenly address the change of the financial situation about. The advocates, uh, are in this affordability crisis and will continue to put off open. That will continue to put off open precarious situations, but they have really stepped up in the past year and a half to meet the need of our community. They cannot keep meeting this need on our own as this crisis continues to grow. I encourage all mothers to support. I know it's December summer, but winter will be coming back soon and there will be families sitting outside. I cannot speak for the next subcommittee, but I can speak for all of them. The future of the subcommittee is up to its committee members, but. Station, we are prepared to support this task force, however that may look. Whether that is continuing the subcommittee and having them run tangentially or dissolving this committee and the big work. As an organization, we are confident that the task force will not be duplicative of our existing benefits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Good chance to reset my timer. All right. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Paul Mueller, the two twelve and seventh street. Um, I'm the economist. I have a proposal and then three short comments. Uh, first, the question is described in the statement. I wonder if this is an appropriation or a line of credit? It sounds like it's money that would be helpful when there's a gap between what is supposed to come in and spent. Will that money be returned or is this just a $300,000? Uh, transfer from the city to Lake County advocates in perpetuity to kind of cover that. So I was confused about how it was presented in that regard. Um, my comments are following. Uh, one, uh, I'm curious about kind of what's being done for helping people find employment. Right? We want long-term stability, having, you know, income is really important, finding jobs. So I didn't hear much of that in the presentation. I'm sure they're thinking about that. So that's something that I'd love to hear more about. Um, secondly, uh. In economics, there's a lot of studies that show that over time subsidies and rental assistance and other kind of other forms of, of assistance like that actually. Can drive costs if there's not more supply. And again, I know everyone's real aware of this, but in the long run. The only way to really deal with the cost of housing and rental is to have more abundant. Supply and not drive that price up even with the various assistance that's being offered. And so, um, the real only solution is easier and cheaper building. Which involves lower fees rather than higher fees for various steps of building, simpler zoning and planning rules. Relaxing restrictions on all that family unit development. So just to make those comments, I think the long-term factor, it really has to be on the building supply side. Um, and I would, uh, recommend that to the council to keep thinking about as part of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
He has a minute and eighteen seconds left. So, I mean, but I mean, you use it, yes, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll respond to your question. So this is a request for an appropriation. Uh, the nature of. Some of it could be returned, of course, when, when funds come in, but some of them, because I was describing program gaps. That's really filling a need that we have not yet found a funding stream for. So to keep things. Uh, and again, you can maybe as a task force, assign about what it looks like. Um, but there is that, that need to fill a gap. That would not be reversed. We would not be reversed for. And so I think that would be complicated to be going back and forth with the task force to tackle that. Um. This second comment about workforce, we do have a workforce in Lake County and we sit at the table with them. Multiple committees, and that's called. And we have a great example of a guy who has three jobs. And now after moving into our transitional housing unit, and he was able to secure those jobs. If he had a place to stay, he could take a shift, he could have a good, and he could go to a good job and do what he wants. So they really go.
Okay. Yes, yes, thank you timer. Next, Emily, please.
Hi, I'm Emily Bolton, I live at. And I'm here tonight in my role as the executive director of the Conservation Center. Um, our energy program is one of the many. In our community that's to prevent homelessness. Um, we do that for paying costs to utility bills. Making investments in our community, communities housing stuff to ensure that it's safe to live in, um, for our community members. Uh, however, despite our efforts through that program, um, we can't increase that per. Programming fast enough. We haven't increased it fast enough to prevent homelessness in our community. Uh, and so actually our energy assistance fund, which is designed to support health, safety and energy issues in. Um, for our community members, we currently have thirteen households that are living in RVs in Lake County. So they are legally considered homeless that we are spending. Um, we are making improvements to those RVs and campers to ensure that they are safe to live in. And we help pay for propane throughout the year. Um, we started with one house in twenty twenty. Um, and in fact, six of those thirteen households moved into their campers and RVs in the last year. Um, this is an example of a program that could be potentially funded through this fund. Um, we did not expect these requests when we launched our energy fund. Um, we had a community member walk through our door and ask for help. Um, and we are not in the business of saying no. Um, we really want to keep our community members here in our community contributing where they've chosen to live and where they belong. Um. And so I think our program is the only program like this in the state. Um, and we are really eager to continue this program, whether it's days at C four as part of our energy program or. Is perhaps elsewhere in the community where it makes more sense. I also think it's an example of why we need to dedicate more funds. Within our community to programs like this, um, because it is a huge burden and lift on our staff. Um, my staff, as amazing as they are, um, are not trained caseworkers. Um, we have trained, um, staff that advocates. Who we've already seen aren't able to meet the need currently because of funding. Um, and this is an example of a program where. Our staff is really going above and beyond to support our community members, but that if we as a community could step up and ensure. That we have the funding to hire staff and expand these programmings that we, programs that we could really. Meet this need and provide the resources that our community members deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes, Steve, please.
Uh, my name is Steve. Well. Years ago, the climate was a lot hotter than here. Um, from mid-December to about the end of February. We would have two, three weeks of twenty minus twenty to twenty-four degrees weather. Now the climate is a lot warmer. So I, with that in mind, um, there seems to be three types of groups that. One, it, it involves convictions or, or. Even though the people are working or, or, you know, two immigration, uh, people. And, uh, perhaps we should send the governor a letter and ask him to send us two thousand packages and then see if we can. Uh, uh, like, you know, see if we can deal with that and, and make accommodations for them. Um, I, I say that in a joke. Might be as a solution, but, um, but the third is mental illness suffered usually with some type of drug usage. Or into going into the second amendment here quite a bit. So. Um, Oregon has relatively recent federal, federal decisions on issue, issue currently while it's pending. Federal court, this may have, uh, been rooted in California homeless decision court. The consensus of these decisions thus far that you cannot take a punitive approach to homelessness unless the municipality has appropriate housing available. And either the individual refuses accommodation or fails to meet reasonable rules regarding the tendency of such accommodation. Um, so in such case, follow-up punitive results resort is possibly necessary, which may then be adjusted. Court-wise to enter treatment, either both mental health or substance abuse. Now, this is about, I got done writing this thing here. I got one minute left. Um, there's a high exitism rate for the alcohol and drug abuse people, probably sixty-five percent. But I still think, um, we need to, uh, plan with whatever we're doing here for the kind of contingency. Because, because of the weather is so accommodating, uh, I think that population is going to start to grow in Leno. And in Lake County and the camping in the woods, um, at some point, we should be doing something. If they can't accept the housing solutions we have, then, um. Then there should be, there should be primitive solutions also. Grab. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to offer a public comment on this issue? Oh, sure.
Yeah, to come further about long-term solutions. Let's ask for now is to sustain the programs and keep homeless services going, but we are absolutely going to be looking at long-term solutions. Uh, building projects with the task force. That is one of the most expensive parts of homeless services. We've got the rental assistance, but. Obviously, the end goal is to build, have available housing for people making thirty percent A and minor less. Um, so we're looking at, you know, permanent supportive housing, um, other. Building projects that could be attainable for this population that can't access the kind of middle ground projects that move now. So, yeah, long-term solutions are definitely heavy on the building and. That's hopefully going to happen if it just. You stuck away and that's why task force and partnership with local government will really help. And, uh, we've really gotten to know the locals who are experiencing this problem over the years and. Especially in recent months and the program will continue to prioritize and serve locals who we know need these services. Uh, and it'll continue to be the collaborative effort with all these partners and hopefully continuing.
Thank you.
I have a little bit of a quote, is your favorite city council?
Speaking of. I, I think one of the things that's needed. Is we need to open our eyes to who we're actually talking. Um, we're talking about. Normal people who cannot afford to live here that are being forced out of their homes. So yes, there is. The, the, Steve, I'm sorry, I don't completely agree with your categories, but there's the, there, there is a chronic homelessness problem here that. It's, you know, not as present or obvious as we see in the front range or, um, in urban areas. But below the surface, there are simply normal citizens who are being evicted. Who can't afford an emergency expense. And these are the people that this state unit has got to pay.
Okay. Thank you, Emma. Are there further public comments on this issue? Sure.
I'm sorry, I don't think it's a baby's number. I'm Nancy Bailey. Um, I'm a business owner. I live in Lake County. Business owner here in, uh. My thought on this is that, you know, more money will need to be allocated to important resources like this because with a forty percent reduction in sales tax. Um, more people will lose jobs. I mean, layoffs are inevitable. When we have even a ten percent. So, um, I, you know, as you're thinking about the importance of these types of programs, know that, you know, if we all expected a. A post-COVID adjustment, if you will, then we're in that period right now. It's, it's not ready. So, um, I would like to offer my support for this program and be prepared for more. Services needed if people can't find and find jobs in their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty seconds.
You can add at the end of the meeting, if you've had your three minutes. Please come in, tell us who, give us your name and where you live and you have three minutes.
Sure.
Can you come up to the podium so that?
And I've been resident at Lethal for four years. I'm a native to Aurora. I have five children. I own flower shops in Orlando. Uh, in Denver, California, the Calis lilies, Denver, they were flower flower. With pandemic, my family informed me that I was being quarantined without them. Outside of blocks. I was instantly homeless. I danced with my home fullness by moving between different homes. I got the sense of the partnership. That a community can offer when people are struggling with breakdown or something unforeseen, addiction or, you know, um, tragedy. And, um, I had a traumatic brain injury, so my unicorn horns coming in there, you know? Um, but I, that's what actually brought me up, uh, to Lethal. Since then, I've moved in eleven of my friends from over in Denver. Partnered with them and finding employment and finding houses, sleeping on my sofa. Um, the partnership with the company, the organizations I can see for, um, have been immeasurable. I live mostly off grid. I first came to town, moved between D L N land and Forests land. I do the boat tours down in Flint Lakes and we start this week, seven days a week. I am passionate about Syria and passionate of people who are welcomed, loved, accepted and have stays at home. Home was very different throughout the second years when you had a little child or you're married or you're single. I didn't expect me and my children to get forty-six, not many of them actually in under my roof. We have many roofs, a whole full family, a whole community. Um, so I just. Not exactly sure what this conversation was about, but I have a friend that, uh, we helped bring up Denver, who's been participating with the Bridge of Hope. She's just an extraordinary woman. We took many trips down the mountain with a vehicle. Jessica, I'm right there. We have visited in Philadelphia. He goes, you need a vehicle? I need a road trip. But it's those moments we actually share who you are, what you want, what you're dealing with. People can do this, something like that. I actually think. People underneath it all do want to make a difference. They want to contribute. Sometimes we so come from scarcity. Or chaos that we can't foresee the path. I think Lethal is perfect to create some housing programs and partnerships and different initiatives. That actually attract people to Lethal who want to participate in this of your homes. Thank you.
Could you tell me your name again, please?
C A L E E, Cali, Laborum, L A B R U M.
Thank you so much. Okay, other public comments? I'm sure nobody's hiding behind the pillar that I can't see through. Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much and thank you to the advocates for this presentation on such an important issue and I appreciate the input from the public on this. It sounds like. We are just gonna have a really robust budgeting session this year. I do want to suggest that um, we have something on. Maybe the next agenda, uh, a short discussion about adding someone to the task force from this body.
You do not.
Okay.
Okay, I'll figure out. It wouldn't be a, because we wouldn't make this just.
I think somebody is gonna volunteer or be voluntold. We'll figure it out. Thank you all so very much. Let's move on to a presentation from Treetop, Treetop Childcare, I told guys.
Thank you. Um, Laura, do you have a presentation for it? Okay, so let's figure out.
There you are, cool. Um, thank you all for allowing me to be here. Uh, my name is Amy Aljira and I'm here to uh, share who we are. Vision Treetop Child Advocacy Center. Uh, I'm here with Zaper, who is um, a treasurer. On board. Um, he actually works as the director. He's the director of my agency, John Brackenridge. Um, so we are here to share who we are. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, is it Laura, are you running this or is it? Um, so we are a child advocacy center. We are two full-time employees, myself and the executive director and our family victim advocate, Oprah Diskin. We also have um, two forensic interviews on interviewers on staff as well as a marketing consultant. Um, I'm a mom with two small children. I live in Brackenridge in Sonoma County. Um, prior to this, I was a probation officer who served the judicial district, worked for Lively County, um, and I served as uh, domestic bounds. Supervisor, um, I ran drug charge for a report and was a nurse. I moved over to um, Treetop Child Advocacy Center seven months ago. Um, as I mentioned, I am a mom with two small children. I have a passion about children who are abused. Um, and really want to keep our communities safe. Um, we serve the judicial district. Eagle Lake and Seven County and our mission is to support child victims of abuse and their families through intervention, advocacy and support. If you go to the next slide, Sarah. Um, this just shares, oh, the one. There we go. This just shares um, the history of it, C I C. So they actually began in nineteen eighty-five, the district attorney named Bud Kramer. Um, who felt that um, it was tough for a child. He was sexually abused, uh, witnessed about a time, been neglected, who's confused physically. Um, and had to share their story to six different agencies. Um, so they, they first advocacy was established in nineteen eighty-five in Huntsville, Alabama. And that was just to allow a child to go to one place and speak with the multidisciplinary treatment or treatment team or other. Community partners to share what had happened in chief. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, Treetop Child Advocacy Center was established in Brackenridge, um. In Sonoma County and we are the only, we have the judicial district of what if a child is abused. In our district and we are not, do not travel to Denver or. Um, and in two thousand and twenty-four, um, again, we've been established with a series now, here safe, we've been over thirty-four countries around the world. Um, what it looks like is we, we serve children who have been abused and we provide the child advocacy center model. We be trained forensic interviewers um, in Huntsville, Alabama. They will receive their certifications and a child will come to our facility and share their views. Uh, we are in a safe, quiet, supportive environment. Um, they are with the forensic interviewer alone and in a. A private room with their reported, um, and then we have an observatory in our safe. It's the investigative party, which is law enforcement or V H S or which is services. And we monitor the time in the interview and we listen to what's going on and what has happened. Whether they're in physical abuse in their home. Actually assaulted. Into substance abuse in their home or they could be inspired between their caregivers. Um, and so that's where it starts. For the forensic interview, we will receive a referral from C P M to law enforcement. We coordinate. Within twenty-four to forty-eight hours and we greet the family in our safe. In the moment that they walk into our door, we will provide needs assessment and health assessment and just establish all of their needs and partner with our community. And then we also have the multidisciplinary treatment team. Uh, so we meet with these group of the ones. Um, which is law enforcement, V H S, uh, we have the pain nurse that we work very close with, pain companies where she provides. Exam for. Actually assaulted, um, the advocate, district attorney, and then we have. Um, so that is the model. Again, we work, we work very close in the moment that they're there. Tire investigation, um, whether the case had been closed because enough evidence is wrong. Huge, um, we still can support families by turning court with them that are in. Um, we will go to the hospital. Assaulted by their alcohol. Um, those can come through our facility. Um, I just want to share what that model is like. And then go to the next slide. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, um, the counties that we serve, Summit, Lake Eagle and other, we had forty-four cases on Summit. Twenty-nine percent out of Lake, eighteen percent out of Eagle and nine percent out of. Um, which means we will never turn down. We receive that. Even Park, even Jefferson County, um, will never turn down just because. Um, we serve seventy-six direct victims, child victims in two thousand and twenty-three and a hundred and forty-one secondary victims for the total of two hundred and fifty. In two thousand and twenty-three. Um, a secondary victim is a sibling of a child that will come in to our space, the caregiver, mother, father. Brothers and assaulting the baby over a few years. We serve. Next slide. Um, I think I've shared, it just shows the percentages of the violence that we see. Um, again, it's that's all fifty-six percent in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, twenty-one percent was witnessing a violent crime, thirteen was actual physical abuse towards their child and ten percent. Um, we have seen a rise in immigration in Sonoma County and in as well as other towns that we serve. Um, and previous slide just shows um. In two thousand and twenty-three, which was fifty-five. Um, next slide is just where we show the age range. Um, so we will serve children zero to eighteen. Our biggest percentage is forty-seven percent with ages seven and twelve. Um, and then gender and. Next slide, please. Um, we have been working pretty diligently on our strategic goals. We are really working to expand our business partnerships. Um, we have been going out and speaking with all. Community partners and local government and really just sharing what our need, um, but we've been working to. Family business partnership, raising community awareness, uh, we've been on the radio, in the paper, we have. Who has really been helping us with the media, um, achieving operational excellence and sustaining financial stability. Um, I wanted to share, um, unfortunately, I, like I said, I've been in this position for seven months now. Sadly, at the end of twenty-three, we were informed that our biggest funding source, which is Boca, um, stands for Victims of Crime Act. Is our federal funding source, which is at the big bucket. Um, unfortunately, it's going to cut fifty, fifty percent in two thousand and twenty-five. Um, the Prime Victim Fund, which is under the Boca Act, um, unfortunately, is monetary penalties of the level. Waves or just complication rates have diminished dramatically. In two thousand and twenty-one, eighteen, twenty eighteen, um, it was at fifty-six million and twenty twenty-one is. A million and then again, we are. That is a big portion of that budget, which we are concerned, we are going to aim for support in two thousand and twenty-five. Why it's really putting it out there, um. Um, the next slide just shows other avenues of what we've been trying to do as far as asking the state for support as well as, um. We were down in the Capitol in, um, March eight, getting in front of the House of Representatives and Senators and helping, uh, find support in two thousand and twenty. Also helpful, thirteen forty-nine is an eleven percent. Gun manufacturing tax that could potentially help two thousand and twenty. They can start all the days in two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, I'll speak to the numbers here. Right now with Treetop. Um, and I joined the board back here. And just looking at kind of where Treetop has been in its journey, I think Andy's the fifth or sixth. Executive Director since twenty eighteen, so. We're really focused on getting stability with our board and from an executive director perspective, putting a plan going forward. That will focus on different revenue streams for Treetop, whether it's governments, local governments, counties, et cetera. But also looking at fundraising, business sponsorships, grants, other avenues that nonprofits generally do. We are in that uh, transition, if you will, right now. Um, but our main focus uh, over the last month or so was really meeting with our local governments that we participate in. And trying to kind of show where the money's coming from right now and what our goal is going forward. Um, most of the funding has really been coming from. And so our focus has really been last month or so, getting out to Eagle County, Fair Creek County and Lake County. To meet with the local jurisdictions out there in Esper. And uh, as a, to be a community partner, we do. We do have other things we've got going on, trying to supplement the funding requests. Do you want to go to the next slide? So we have a kind of a breakdown. Just pure government perspective, where we are today, eighty-two thousand is what we are expecting in twenty twenty-four. Seventy, I can't read that far, seventy-six percent is from Summit County, the rest is from Eagle. The annual ask that we're doing right now, going out to meet with the tenants is to try to spread some of that to the other counties and or. Municipalities that we serve and with the goal of making up our football. That we're looking at in twenty twenty-five, which is a hundred and fifty grand, give or take. And so, um, we're just trying to raise awareness to get into the budgeting cycle. Which all the governments work on in some retirement and, you know, uh, answer any questions you might have with relation to that, that. Um, you know, we're, as we sit here today, if we don't increase our funding here. Reality of where Treetop is and its evolution, all the C A Cs are impacted in Colorado. With the cuts that have been happening with Boca, but more mature C A Cs are probably able to weather this a little bit because they've been around longer. And more, more of a mature problem. And um, that's, that's where we are. And I just wanted to have the chance to come each other.
Um, and then the next slide, I can share what, um. The operational support really will. Really go to, um, our structure, um, personnel, which is, um, our myself, you know, seeing forensic interviews. Our rank, our I T, our child calm, our continuing our education, um, our membership fees and certifications, our accounting and our marketing development. Um, there are some other things that we would like to offer us the children, um, we would love to bring on medical. Health and really support children who are displaced or need, you know, just pajamas, a bed and toothbrush, just having that. Ability to provide them with the stuff that they need when we come through our service. Um, and again, I just want to share that. To small children, I know that, um, violence isn't going to stop and. These people go to stop children and continue to go through these things and, uh, we just hope to be able to.
And one number that. I'm eighteen, we're about four hundred and fifty, give or take cases, so it's around eighty, maybe to a hundred annually depending. Here. Statisticating. That's true.
Thank you so much. Other questions?
Well, I have a couple of questions. And I'm a mom of four big kids, so thank you very much for the work that you do. It's great. Uh, a lot of the services you offer, and I think I understood your presentation, you said this, are offered by D H S. So Treetop Child then would be steps in for the rural communities where D H S doesn't have offices, that the main.
Uh, a lot of our cases, um, come from law enforcement. So they, D H S does for you there and they will help. So trying to really work more closely with them and see how they could help support our victims that come through. Uh, that's something that we are actually in a discussion.
Which D H S do you mean? The, 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 I don't know, what is it, the Department of Home Services, Health Services, yeah. Yeah, so are there D H S offices in some of our rural communities like Brackenridge or? And then how does the advocacy work you do complement what CAS does, for example, because I know CAS is. I think they do the forensic interview.
They do.
But they step in to represent children in court cases.
Correct. Because I say, for my specialized advocates, and what is very different from what we are providing in the community, uh, they are working with families. Work, um, we are working with children who are actually being assaulted, abused and then potentially are still. Do kind of collaborate. Yeah, thank you.
Rebecca, you took my task question, but thank you.
You work very well with the children's in twenty-ten. The sheriff's office and Sarah Williams, the advocate there and the people that are in Lively County as well, uh. And, you know, we, we do know that a lot. County have to be driven to, to Treetop in Sonoma County and Brackenridge. And if we aren't, they. They potentially have reported under orders of reporting their abuse and the cycle continues.
I, I, I had a question just about like, how. How did you come up with the financial ask breakdown for each place? We are so small.
The cases are running right now and looking at from a county perspective. Um, it's not exact science, but like Lake County's twenty-nine percent and. Of our total case volume and, um, I can't have twenty-one percent between Lake County Board of Commissioners and Red Hill. So I was really trying to look at percentages of where the cases are falling within. Eagle particularly, they're just trying to spread it out that way. In July, we're going to go to. Call M M C managers, mayors and commissioners for Summit County, so we can present to all of them once. Um, and kind of go through the same logic process and really trying to raise awareness, which Treetop had not done in the past. And the other counties that they've been participating in the judicial district, so it's really trying to raise awareness of what we do and how we support the community. And come up with a logic that, um. Represents what the pieces are coming from.
Thank you. I mean, I, this is the first that I have personally heard of Treetop.
Okay, last couple of questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our last presentation is homegrown from our very own city admin assistant regarding the presentation on the city website. So, for all you leaving, there's a new website for the city. You should check it out. It's really cool.
And this is not on your tab. So, good evening. My name is Sarah Bushman. I am the administrative assistant for the city of. I've met some of you virtually in the past and a couple of you in person, so it's nice to see everyone here. Tonight, I'm here to speak with you about our exciting launch for our new website. This is a pretty significant milestone in our efforts to enhance our communication and our engagement with our community members. So, we'll kind of begin with just a brief overview of the main drive behind this website improvement. We're going to do a review of what's new and improved, followed by a little actual tour, taking you through part of the website, the official launch, and how we're going to work on it. So, let's get started. You might be wondering why we're so excited about a new website. What's the big deal, right? For one, it's really all about power of communication. And I know that our city administration team really recognizes that. So, our new website will serve as a comprehensive resource for general information. We use bold codes and processes, marketing for local businesses, and just helping residents really stay connected with their local government and their community. So, these transparent, excuse me, transparent open interactions will really foster more trust and hold us more accountable also. We're aiming to keep our citizens informed, encourage feedback, and promote collaborative problem solving. We really hope with this easier navigation and improved accessibility that we are creating more freedom in the experience of all of our partners. So, what's actually changed? What have we done differently? First of all, we partnered with a new platform through City Plus. They are the leading tech firm that actually specializes in government-specific software. So, this is their thing. This is their specialty. Really designed to enhance the interaction specifically between local government and our residents. The big thing that I'm really excited about is we've added a monthly newsletter signup on the website, as well as subscription-specific pages. So, they come on the Streets page, okay, what does that look? So, every time an announcement comes out, they have an Excel update. Somebody that has subscribed to that will receive an automatic-generated email with that in it. So, it'll be nice. People won't have to go and enter anything anymore. Also, with this platform, we're not really only going to enhance our functionality, but we're also going to allow for better, excuse me, better data protection. What that looks like is more on the back end for me. If I want to know who has specifically gone and looked at an announcement or a newsletter, I can see that. That information is going to be great. It's really helpful for us to see, you know, who's looking at what. Maybe we need more information on the Streets page about updates. Maybe we need more information on the City Council page. So, that information will be able to access this new platform. Actually, really excited about that aspect of it, kind of geeky. There's also going to be a new How Do I section, which we really hope will kind of prompt some more general questions. How do I pay a ticket? How do I record? Things like that. It's really a big goal of our website to kind of improve these or things by creating some more intuitiveness of certain pages and processes. So, we really want the site to be engaging and not discouraging or intimidating. We've also updated our careers page, and most importantly, we've ensured media compliance, just to make sure we're meeting all those standards. Um, perfect. Well, right now, I'm going to take you to the new website. You mentioned a lot, I have to share a different screen. Is it live now? Can we all just plug? Definitely. And I'm not going to bring you to get to that. It can't go live immediately. There has to be a transition period from our new website, just to ensure things go. About a two-week process for the lead. So, this is our homepage. Right now, there's this lovely red banner across the top because we really want to communicate with people that this is a new website. There are some things in process, or in, we're updating, we're changing, so kind of bear with us, please, is what that announcement is more for. But we've got our nice logo over here. We have a nice link right to the City Council page, which we'll go ahead and go there first. When we transitioned, a lot of the information actually came over from the old website. So, we tried to make sure it was as current as possible. We have meetings listed on the other side. We have our work visas and resolutions. We also have pages for minutes and agendas. People can watch previous meetings. They can reach out to you all personally. Things like that. But all the next things, just to kind of give you a more general overview. So, we have a lot of them that came from the old website, the animal shelter page, like already showed you the City Council page. Our police page is coming along as well, and it's kind of hard to talk about, to show you. We have the chief of police position posted, as well as new officers. It's just a lot more streamlined, just to me, seem a little more friendly as well. And hopefully, like we talked about a little bit more too, to where people need to go to, to get certain things. And the other thing we brought over, we still have pay online options, which are great, so everybody can still go to the website and pay for whatever you need to pay for. And then because of our platform, it was incredibly easy to really build all of this, which, again, people are excited because it's like a geeky person over here. But we're, we're also working on the news and announcements page, like I talked about. This is kind of our bulletin will be, people will be able to sign for these specific announcements that will just automatically to them. And so, the email thing. So, as you can see, there's several options. We tried to kind of put them all over. Email notifications, just so people can see they have many options to sign. So, you can go to the City Council page, and if you're on the City Council page and you're like, I really want to know more, you can click the signup button on the City Council page for specific bulletins. And then just also the meeting, the agenda information. The other thing I'm excited about is the about protection. We've really tried to update that as far as with new, the new restaurants and bars, just making sure those are current and those things are active. We really want people to know about this. And then, man, those are the big ones. Like I said, we're often still kind of building certain things. Councilwoman Thomas asked, when is it really live? It's, it's technically, probably stopped. But right now, it's, it's open. You can go look at it. You can do stuff. You can still make payments, and it will still match to our system. So, we're not going to lose any kind of data or information like that. But there's still a lot of things on the backend that are, platform project manager has to make sure smooth out. At least that's like a two-week period. So, we are live, but the other website is still live. And so, we have a banner and communication on that website that says, new website coming, this website is proactive. We definitely tried to cover all the bases, so people weren't confused about, is my email going to be received? Does it create a problem? We really didn't want that. So, I'm going to go back to. And then kind of just to follow up on the rollout, June newsletter, we're going to have the information in its specifics. Tonight, so I'm really hoping word of mouth will help. And then we also talk about how well, I guess, we should redirect to the new website. So, as soon as that happens, even when people will go to type in the old website, they'll shoot them off. They lost. I'm also going to do an email blast to our subscribers, just so they're, they can sign up for individual pages. And then, of course, people will fashion away, and put some flyers in. I'm definitely open to questions, but I'm also going to make a suggestion. If you see anything specific, things that you want made to City Council page after you all review it together, if you want to reach out to me, you can schedule a meeting. And I can easily just, updates, I can add things, incredibly awesome stuff. And I think it's going to be great for us to just keep things current with the community. Any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Specifically to the calendar, is the way that works just basically posting a Google Calendar?
It is. It's linked on the back to the city Google Calendar, which is kind of nice. For your meetings, it'd be the just auto population, which is great. Laura meetings and Castle meetings, HPC, that's super neat. And the objective platform, using also, basically, allows us to just take our minutes, just sync them on to.
Only reason I asked, I know it has some limitations. For example, I'm able to schedule meetings for every other month for Laura, so we will always say that for every single month. Unless we go and manually schedule them, but that just was wondering if that was going to be a transition that was going to be made.
And it's something that we can talk about with the project manager, because we don't have to use Google Calendar. That's just what we're currently using. So, we're all going to do ideas and suggestions, especially for the. Google Calendar should be able to do a custom.
I've only ever.
They manage every other week.
Yeah.
They're scheduling in that.
I, I, I have to say, I will miss out on Laura ones every month.
I think it can do more complicated.
Oh, I can.
Well, well, it's not much of a.
Regardless.
I'd just like to take a minute to thank Intercom, this is here, but he started, and I dumped this in his lap. And then when he was promoted to permanent technician position, this ended up in Miss Bushman's lap. And unfortunately, she had used Civic Plus in her prior position and was able to jump right in and keep the project going. I think you all know this has been a big priority of us as a, as a city to be communicating with better. I, for one, looked at the city's website when I was interviewing for the position, and it was riddled with typos, obviously different style and writing. We're, I mean, we tried to correct all the bad links, positions that were no longer open. It was a big lift to get everything. And I really appreciate Miss Bushman's just stepping in and getting it across finish line. I was a little, you know, concerned that given the transition in positions, it might have a little bit of a setback. But we did not have any setback at all in getting this done, so.
Thank you. You're doing all the.
Like I said, I'm a little excited about taking one of the, especially if it helps. Yeah, also, like to shout out to Justin Talbot. He, we will hopefully have recurring photos. I think that was an option we had at one point, for seasonal photos. But he was super willing to help us and let us, I think, revert nominal cost purchase fees photos to use not only in our website, but in our recruiting efforts for the state of the park. So, it's fantastic. So, Talbot is really a good representation of our city, too.
Sarah, can we maintain the website or something? We're heavily on your.
Very fresh. I can do both of it. And there are, it's a very user-friendly platform in that sense that the training videos are, if I, and I mean, for me, it's easy for me to just go down the rabbit hole, you know, the resources, because they do provide all these great training videos of how-tos. So, a lot of what I've learned, I've actually learned from training videos, and then if I just have a question, reach out to a project manager. And he usually can hop on a call with me there to, and kind of go down the rabbit. There are some things on the back end of the field that they are doing, which are a little bit more involved, and so I'm actually grateful for that. But the majority of it, we can all do. And that's the big goal here is we want to be able to make sure things are current. We want to be able to do updates on the regular as far as our forms, our documents. Another thing I didn't say, we're also trying to move forward, fillable, fillable form options online, just to really try and eliminate some of that paper that paper that gets lost in translation and movement. So, no, it's, it's a really neat platform of parts. Just plus being able to build it up without, you know, super professional, I should say. Nice to master.
How do we decide which businesses are listed?
So, we have categories, basically, as far as restaurants and bars, recreation, museums, they're, they're sort of retail merchant. That's actually a conversation I've had with a couple of. A little bit more of the spec, kind of the Manhattan, more specifically, a bar versus a full restaurant, or, you know, just for example. But we really just try to make sure. So, that's something I've worked with as far as businesses, I want to make sure that I haven't seen anyone. And so, I've just been trying to go out with the last newsletter, and I'm personally with Andrew, because we've tried to meet a lot of folks at businesses. Gave out my card, if I could, just to let people know if they have anything they want to share as far as the newsletter or the website or events, things like that, please reach out to us. We'll try and do our.
I'm so glad you did that. That's really well received. I was talking to one of the shop owners just a couple of days ago. She was just delighted that we could come down and hand her these licenses.
Thank you. It's good to hear.
Do we, I mean, could we use just the, the list of business licenses, the current, to populate?
That's, that's, that would be what I'd like to do, and then kind of more work with Vinnie Andrew and define certain categories more. And it's like, I, I do love having that on, on the website. Some of them I didn't know about until Andrew told me about them, and so it's just word of mouth, I'm not sure. But that's a great idea there.
I would also like to point out, you can get a.
Depending on your definition of.
Sarah, thanks. This is awesome. How does, how does multilingual access work with this?
That's a great question. That's something we're working on. It's my understanding that there's an auto translation portion. As far as what we're still, we're trying to want to make sure that we have the appropriate translation is what we're really concerned about. So, that's just something that we're still kind of talking about with the American translations already. So, there's movement, but it's.
So, you're saying there'll be a toggle, English, Spanish?
There, yeah, there usually is at the top, then there's, and I don't know if our, where, yes, she's, she can see to this. Sometimes it can be tricky with, with those sorts of compliance on the website, because then it's a matter. We have to make sure we're offering everything. And so, that's another step in the road that we're still. Type on is we don't have a final solution for that just yet.
Ella, did you want to comment on that?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, that's me. I don't know if you're familiar too much with all of the website compliance law and things like that. We're talking about having translation options on the website. And my concern and experience in the past is just making sure we have every translation or the meeting, I guess, our legal compliance as far as what we're offering then. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. There has been a, a lot of recent change in the law about website accessibility. I. I, I'm not immediately familiar with the language translation requirements. I do have experience with, um. Translating services in, in a courtroom setting. I do know that the law is behind. So, um, I will have to look into whether the accessibility has made. Website translation services more accommodating than what I've personally experienced, um, in a courtroom setting. Uh, so I can get back to all that. I, I do know that there, and I'm sure you're. Familiar as well with the redesign, just the accessibility changes, um, that have got, probably gone into uh, your website.
Yeah. Um, and that's something that, um. We are basically all of our, working on it, so website, the new website project manager. Cause I'm trying to look and see what did we have. It's compliant with me and then. Um, so it's kind of pulling a lot of hits during this.
This is so fantastic. It's really exciting.
Easier to look at.
Yeah.
I used it today to find some code stuff for somebody who called. And the old website, I always had to, you know, I always just had to go to Google and be like, let them list the code to get the media code thing to come up. Oh, my God. The button access. Boom. It was right there. So awesome.
Great. Thank you. And like I said, we are open to input, or even if you see a comma in the wrong place. Please tell me. Any other questions?
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for letting us be.
And that concludes our presentation and discussions section. Let's move on to action items. We first have resolution thirty-one, resolution of the city of Leadville approving the planning and zoning commissioners.
Commissioner.
Commission.
Commissioner.
It says commissioners, but. I was just reading, I was just reading.
We covered that earlier today. That's exactly my, my. So maybe one page.
Correct. Okay, um. Chapeau, did you want to say anything about this in particular?
Yes, for the record, to the city of Leadville, um, going along on this on page thirty-eight of your packet. Um, essentially, this is a mayoral, mayoral appointment, with consent of city council. Uh, currently we have two vacant positions on the planning and zoning commission, uh, one regular member and one alternate member. The regular member vacancy was created because, um, Gabby Wolers, uh, she's our chair, um, she was her chair. Her, uh, she served six years, her position expired, her term expired, um, created a vacancy. We've had a vacancy for a while now on, on alternate position. One of those workers can still, we still have a remaining vacancy for our alternate position. Um, so this was advertised in the paper. Uh, we've received two applications. Um, Gabby Wolers applying for a re, uh, reappointment, so Paul Mueller is here tonight. Um, also first mission versus a next year, um, um, both applicants are applying for the regular commissioner position. Uh, we do not. The alternate, so this is an appointment, um, just one of these two applicants. For the P and Z regular member position, and so this would not be an appointment.
Thank you. Um, so in our packet, we have, um, Gabby's letter of interest. Um, I did get an email from her. She is traveling today and not able to join. Um. And then we have a letter of interest from Paul Mueller. Uh, Paul, did you want to get up and just kind of introduce yourself and give us a little?
Sure.
Background on your interest?
Um, so as you know, I'm an economist, I care about housing. Uh, I think a lot about incentives and trade-offs to my day job. I spend a lot of time doing that. Um, I'm actually happy to defer to Gabby. I think she's a lot more experienced than I do. So I saw the little vacancy and I was interested in, in coming, I think, and bringing stuff to the, to the planning, to any commissioning. But she's the chair, she's been on a long time, and so I'm happy to defer to that. But I wanted to come and, and say that I'm here in the community. I'm happy to contribute and participate, um, and be a part of conversations. And so, um, I don't know officially, officially withdraw my application, but I'm happy for Gabby to be. Uh, the member given her experience already on the committee being chair. But again, I'm just saying, here, I care about housing, I think a lot about, um, again, incentives, uh, structures of. Uh, housing, how things get built, I'm a business owner, researcher. So just wanted to kind of say hello that I'm here and I've been looking for ways to try to get more involved in the community. Um, and so, uh, I just wanted to put myself on, on your radar. You are looking for some of the best ideas off of, or have other positions that, uh, maybe I could fill or will be on the line. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Uh, Tim, that's good.
Um, and if I fall, may I ask why you're not interested in the alternate position?
Um, well, so I have five children, um, ten and under, and I own a business and I work full-time. So my time is really limited. Um, and so I'm going to serve, really want to be making sure that I was participating in the. The decisions that are made all the time before I commit the time to the meetings that the position involved. So that's mine. Yeah, very efficient.
Uh, please, Steve, go ahead.
Um, I. Maybe it just slipped by, but I thought I was maintaining my application for this board. And I'd be happy to be able to. And I think the reason I was passed over last time is because, um, I have a distress. Over, uh, one of the appointments with Mr. Labbe, and, um. I, I think, uh, it, it would be good for me to be there, uh, to balance out. Mr. Labbe is really, uh. Focused on, um, on, on the board. I think he's in charge of neutral. And, uh, I'm a, a part of a grassroots. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions or opinions about Gabby's? Application?
I have a big recommendation that Gabby can bring.
Any other opinions to that effect?
He's pretty comfortable.
Well, this is, um, although council does have roles, which we appoint people to as a group. This is a mayoral appointment with council, with the consent of council. So I am going to make this motion. Um, I move that the city council adopt resolution number thirty-one, series of twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville, Colorado, appointing a planning and zoning commission, mission member. And I'm going to, um, appoint Gabby Woler to that role.
That's good second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Beth?
Yes.
Councilmember Gar?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to resolution number thirty-two, series of twenty twenty-four. This is a resolution involving us, uh, an I D A between us and the, and the county. For managing the election. Um, Simonson, would you like to give us a little bit of background?
Sure, this is, uh, very similar to the intergovernmental agreement you saw for the last election. Uh, the coordinated election that we had with county, so. Uh, it, generally, it's a, a. Same agreement that we see every time, the, the, obviously the dates have changed, the obligations have not. Um, our obligations during the election are virtually, I think, limited to, um, ballot language. And that is that it. The rest of the work that have been left is handled by the county clerk's office. And so this, uh, agreement is similar to the one you saw before, and it has been reviewed by our state attorney. And by the county attorney and by the county clerk.
Questions for staff from this somewhat procedural resolution? And I would entertain a motion.
Best moves to approve resolution number thirty-two, series of twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Leadville and Lake County government. For the conduct and administration of the twenty twenty-four general election to be held November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
November five. Yeah, November five.
And you said twenty-fifth. November five, twenty twenty-four.
Thanks.
So nine seconds.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sar?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Beth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Mayor Green?
Yes.
So on this, that there, city's responsibilities, we have, um. I can't remember, it's called a designated election official, but in the agreement right now, it just says deputy city clerk. So we will need, once we appoint, uh, actually, once we hire a new deputy city clerk and then appoint. A new clerk, then I will let, uh, county clerk clerk to know who that person is.
Where are they walking into? Okay. Um, I, you know, we usually take a break around eight, but we have so little left. Are you guys up pages? Yeah, all right, let's do it. This is, this is a record breaker. Uh, public comments. Yes, Steve.
Steve, one seven. Okay, so, uh, we talked about parking at the. Third street there. We had a talk about parking behind the opera house. And there was a problem with that. Uh, I was hoping officers could, uh, check that out at about three in the morning. Because people drink there, exhaust the bottles. Um, and I cleaned some of that up not too long ago. Um, but also I think this should be considered as, um, someone homeless with a vehicle that they should be. Allowed to park maybe a week or so or something. And there, there should be a mechanism set up viewing that. Um, noisy vehicle exhaust subculture, I think we need to address this with, uh, police citations. Um, talk with, uh. Commissioner H F P C Chair Edwards about the Sanford document being available to the public. This needs to be, uh, underneath strict, uh, administrative, uh, control. With nobody having free access to it in time. Um, P and Z have to be considered ongoing, um. Like the B and Z, I don't see why it shouldn't be on the alternate. Um. Gabby's email indicates that the great lab base still has an email assigned to him that should be. Uh, deferred to, uh, Mayor Green. Um, hopefully that will happen. Um. Let's see, uh. Oh, getting back to this discussion with the homeless, um. I think that most of the people wearing a Ford. Listen, having issues with this, I'm losing track of the time. Um, our regular guys that have, are in financial distress that just. And the ball is that and immigrants, but there is splinter of the population that we're not addressing. And I think they really need to be addressed, and there, we don't have a mechanism for that. And we're going to leave ourselves up to somebody making a case on this in the courts. And so I think we should have a mechanism for this. Not only do they have higher citizen rights, but. Some of them are dangerous to the community. One of them approached me last Wednesday. He wanted five thousand dollars from me, believe the community. And he's been constantly harassing me. So I, I, I think that, um. We not only need to look at the broad view, the ma- majority of the people are in this situation, but this splinter group is very. Thank you for having me, Steve.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to enter a public comment at the end of this meeting? Okay, let's move on to Mayor's report. Um, I would like to, to take. This time just to briefly. Touched on some of the roles of council, because I know this is, it had, and limitations on our roles. Cause I know this has come up, uh, pretty recently. Um. You know, our, our code says that council possesses all of the legislative powers of the city. And our powers include the management and control of the finances, which I will address that in just a second. Um, we, I just want to remind everybody, we have no hiring or firing authority over the city staff. We do have the authority to create a position, usually on the recommendation from staff. We have the authority to, uh, dis- dispel with a, a, a position, um. But once that position is created, we have exactly zero control over who fills that staffing position. Um, I know in the past occasionally, I, when the mayor was kind of like the everything guy here. He would invite a council member or two to participate in a hiring committee. And I think probably that, I mean, that may continue, but that is not, uh, that's not an option at our discretion. That's a role that we would be invited into. Um, we have a few roles. That we do appoint, you know, hire them, we appoint them. Um, we just had one tonight that was a mayoral appointment with council consent. We also just have council as a body of points, and that those positions include the city administrator, the city attorney. The municipal judge and the alternate, our city treasurer, not to be confused with the finance director position, and the city clerk. Not to be confused with the deputy city clerk position. So if there are concerns that individuals have regarding the staff who are hired. You know, I think it's entirely reasonable to pass those concerns along, um, but that's it. What happens after that is out of our control. Um, I would prefer just to, uh, protect, um, ci- city staff from interruptions. If those concerns came to me first, um, or via your monthly meetings with the city administrator, but not outside of that. These roles are high, are highly prone to, um, interruption over the day. And that really impedes progress on other options. Um. That's about it for that. If you have concerns about the people who council or I appoint. Please direct those concerns to me. Um, I do want to talk about finances, because that, you know, I mean, Christian, I. I, um, first of all, I hear you, and, and I, I think, I think I understand the concern. I think it's a little bit gray. I mean, there is, and I'm, I'm the one now who owes myself most of the quarters. And the, this is the way we've always done it, Jar, in my office. Um, and, but I, but there are some things that. Are, have been done the way that we've always done it, and I'm not a hundred percent sure if that lies embedded in statute. Or if that is simply kind of comes from our old form of government. You know, moved into this one. Um, so specifically, just, I, I want to talk very briefly about just budget. So we, and we're going to get really up close and personal with this, it sounds like this year. Oh, I've got heartburn already. Um, so we don't set staff salaries. We set our own, which is weird, but we do. Um, and we, the role of setting salaries is, is sort of a group. I mean, the city administrator sets it, but it is often done in conjunction with information from H R and information from our finance director. So I don't think there's a rogue process by which we just pick a number because we think it'll be good. I think that's an informed decision, even if, as with everything these days, the numbers hurt when we look at them closely. Um, when we get a budget, it's the city administrator actually prepares it and recommends it to us. And then we will consider it kind of chunk by chunk in a line item fashion. Those line items are estimates of what we think a particular category of. Service or product will be spent on. They are not, they're, they're. They are not guardrails, it's estimates, and it provides the city with a op- uh, opportunity to track expenditures in certain categories. And also to pay attention where, you know, on the monthly financial reports. Where certain items or certain departments are, are leaving what we estimated they would be able to spend. Are leaving what we estimated they would be able to spend. Um, I guess my question, you know, considering what you said, Chris. I know we have a procurement policy, so for particular consultants we hire or for particular large purchases. We, you know, we go through this policy and some of those do need to be approved by council according to that policy. I guess I'm wondering, and maybe I'll lean on Ellie here, but. In terms of when we are in a situation where, say, a department. Or a particular expenditure that's not really under the procurement policy, and here I'm referring to the salary of police chief. Or the proposed police chief. Is there any other? Policies that either other municipalities have that would bounce a, a certain, you know, exceeding X percent of the. Of, of the department's planned expenditures that would bounce at least some of that back. To council for approval, or does that exceed the? Amount of control that council has over the day-to-day expenditures of the city?
My gut reaction is that that would go back to city administrator, but I'm happy to check on that, um. You know, you have your policies, you follow them, you make your approvals, um. I guess there could be kind of a. An extra line in there that does state, you know, if necessary. Uh, and that I would have to look at the procure- procurement policy, excuse me, in greater detail. To see if there's something already included that might address this, so I haven't looked at it recently in depth, um. But, but.
I guess. Go ahead. Go, I, I was just gonna say, just, just with. To, to answer Christian's concern and, and to really get a better answer than my fumbling efforts of being like, well, there's. Yeah, finance, um. Uh, what I would like to know specifically are. Regarding. Overall department. Expenditures or, or even salaries. Are there, do other municipalities or is there room in the interpretation of? Our code and the Colorado statute statutes to expand the procurement policy to say. You know, when a department, say, has a, goes over a trigger, like fifty percent of their budget. We need to come back to council and discuss the, the specifics and get approval.
So I, I, I haven't heard of something like that off the top of my head. I'm happy to look into it, um. It's my understanding that something like that would. Um, fall under the city administrator's responsibilities, but. I can.
Is, is that question, does that? Does that, would that satisfy your, your concern and your curiosity to get an answer to that?
Yeah, I, I think really where my concern is, like, what concerned me about it isn't necessarily that it's an individual entity or one person. It's rather, um, how much a person's making, um, or how much an increase, it's more so the process of. I guess it is how much. It being so much that it's going to be recurring, that kind of gives me the. It could have been any position, I felt the same way, and. You know, there are times where we talk about these expenditures that go over because we have to, um, usually that's. Um, through outside, completely outside of budget expenditures, you know, with the city administrator having to approve. Up to, can approve up to a certain amount, then the mayor can approve up to a certain, then the city council can.
Just to correct you, uh, just, uh, department had to consultation with me. Uh, up to five thousand, maybe five thousand to fifteen thousand, and then over fifteen thousand counts.
So. Correct me if I'm wrong, I shared Christian's sticker shop with seeing that on paper. This was like a twenty-five percent increase over what I remember discussing. Well. Rest discussing a hundred and five, a hundred and ten thousand.
And, and I think like what, as Lori. Mentioned, you know, in that last report where they were talking about it. They did say, we're going to consult with K R W, and we're going to see what range, like, I, I, I don't think that that was a. You know, like, here's where we're starting, but like, you know, this is kind of what we're thinking, but. It's really the discussion with K R W that drove that number to where it is, along with, again. The city administrator, the finance director, you know, and H R saying. You know, how do, how does this work and what can, I mean, you know, like, we offer, I'm ready, but I was, you're like, dang, we're gonna get it. But we need to know what the city can.
But then, I mean, I disagree that. It being such an ostentatious number and such a percentage increase over what we discussed. Then maybe it should have come back to us before it was actually posted.
I think it's more a reflection of. Kind of where we are as a community and what we're discovering. We need to do to attract and retain. Quality people who will. Do well in their.
So, so back in the day. All salaries by twenty-five percent then to get quality people.
That's not, I, I, I don't think that works.
What we've been trying to do is, honestly, is what I've been trying to do is every time we either create a position. When we repost a position, we try to adjust it to the market. Um, I frankly have to admit, in some of the instances, uh, we have not been on target. So I do think in a couple of the hires we've made recently, we have been way too low. We've, we've been lucky, but we are not going to retain our employees in the most competitive. I can tell you for a fact that our employees are getting headhunted by. Lo- other local jurisdictions, um, some folks will tell me who are calling them and who's. Look, I don't think money is going to be always the reason, but if we're not even close to competitive. I think that we can make a great work environment, we can do everything we can to benefit, but it's a big chunk difference. We are going to lose people, and as you can tell, we've been working so hard to stay here for the last. Since I've been here to try and build a stable team, and every time we have somebody go, it's. Things are, you know, faulty, they don't fall from cracks, but we have to transition a lot of work, so. In looking at our salaries, we try and look at what the market is, the flowchart, kind of a. Uh, distinct municipality, but we try and be as competitive as possible.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think the reason that for me, the concern is on the salaries is that. Sometimes we just have to, we have to make decisions, and it's not, I, I, I felt like, you know, I was, we were having discussions. And I think it's good feedback to know there's so many positions the council would like to have more discussion about it. Uh. But I want to retain the ability to decide on salaries based upon the market. You know, other recommendations, other municipalities, and what other information that we can gather to. Do the best we can, again.
Because I think there's, oh, also the danger of like. Aiming, you know, too low, and essentially we waste staff's time to, um. You know, to, to, to go through a useless.
Because I think we, we did mention to you Columbia, so, um, and as Vino mentioned this to you. We went to them with one of our initial postings for police chief, and Columbia's your recruiting firm, they said. Don't even waste your money on us, like, don't even spend your money on us as recruiting firm, because for that salary, you're not getting anybody. And so that was even, I can't remember if that was, it was even above where. Chief was, so. It is kind of a sticker shop.
Yes, I, I will say just on a, a personal level, not. Not this round, but like a prior. Search for a police chief, um, I sent the ad to my little brother, who's deputy in Oregon, and he just. You know, you gotta be kidding me, like, our deputies make more than that. Uh, why would I take on a job like police chief for that? Um, okay, this is a little bit unusual, because we're past public comment, but Paul, I think you may have some. Particular expertise to, to just add a little information to our discussion. Uh, come up, please, come up with that, because you don't want.
No. Paul Mueller, two twenty-seven street, just a quick clarifying comment, I think. Part of what seems to be the issue here is whether this change in salary is going to change the police department budget, right? So if you, so the city administrator is responsible for the budget, the budget is, say, eight hundred thousand dollars. And then this salary bump can be reallocated for the money, and the budget remains eight hundred thousand dollars, that seems to be a city administrator deal. But if it's going to increase the spending on police from eight hundred to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, that would be another application. And so I guess the question in my mind serving is, is this increasing the police budget overall, or is it going to be reallocated? It's being reallocated, and it seems like this would be, uh, in a discretion with the city administrator, so that's just my comment.
And that, actually, thank you for the segue back into the, the conclusion of. My comments here are that, you know, really from a budgetary perspective, like, we look at the bottom line, we have an estimated revenue. We allocate it in lots of different categories according to our line item that adds up to zero. And there is a lot of reallocation that goes on. We are trying to improve our procedures so. That, you know, that's a very clear process, how that happens, I think, you know, just me myself in the last six months. I've discovered like, whoa, you know, like, there's these, there were these random draws from different. Different line items, you know, to, to, to use for a very, very valid city purpose. But it was sort of random where they came from, and it was these line items that were just not being spent down. You know, I would. When that happens consistently, I think, you know, that thing means it's a light item, so this is a. This is a proceed, this is a, this is a living procedure that will be modified, but.
The, the answer to Mr. Wheeler's question is that our city budget overall, we have chosen to do. Uh, federal budget accounting, so when we report to the current legislative affairs. We say, this is what our budget is going to be, whole budget for twenty twenty-four. We need to do a supplemental budget if we exceed that amount as a city, so that's what we do as a supplemental budget. Those have been generally for large capital purchases. So when I've been pretty much a stickler on budgets. I monitor how well departments are keeping on track, sometimes there are the things we can't. Visual, but, but generally, I think the, the concept is, is at the end of the year, we would, we would like to be where we estimated. As far as our budget for twenty twenty-four, it's the same thing I told the department. Look, if you have to spend more on tire change, that's great, but keep an eye on your budget when we get to the end of the year. We don't want you to be over it unless there's a really good reason for it, and I think that's the same thing I hold myself accountable to is that. We're like, we're tracking pretty well for our budget so far. I understand if you hire a police chief and they come in, that's going to affect the salary. So, uh, again, that means maybe we need to look at tightening our belts in other areas where we can. If we have something that can be spent in twenty twenty-five, it doesn't need to be spent in twenty twenty-four, maybe that's what we do.
But.
I.
Go ahead, please, sir.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, um. I, you know, like I share, and I've always had a little bit of heartburn about adding positions, or in this case, you know, expanding. Salaries by this much, because like, as you said, they are ongoing annual expenditures, whereas capital purchases, even if there's just sort of like. Ah, I know, they're so expensive, it's boom, one time, one and done, so they are a little bit harder, at least for me to wrap my head around, like, what is? What is the downstream impact? I will say when we decided to create a planner role, um, I was like. Oh, God, you know, what is this going to do to our, our year over your budget, and you know, I'd like to point out that. This was an extremely successful. Edition of, of a role that we desperately needed, um, so. You know, I, I don't, I don't know what sales tax will be year after year, but that's why when we hit budgeting, we take a pretty conservative approach. To our estimate of what our sales tax would be.
It's. For me, it's not. You all definitely know throughout our council tenure together, it's not a concern of giving people raises. Been strong advocate of that for a long time. Uh, or any specific position or any raise. It's again to that. Long-term. The discussion, what is that about the two positions? Um, general, you know. Knowledge that, yes, I'm gonna do that, and I don't necessarily need the, the ability to say, don't do that. Outside of just personal, like, hey, I don't really, now that I agree with that. It's not that I'm looking for the power to say, Lori, you made a bad decision, we're overriding the needs for. It, it's more so that the fact that there was not that. Sit down with council. This is what's happening, this is why.
And I think that's the basis, that the basis of my request, Kelly, to be like. You know, is there, is there room, is there legal room, or is there precedent for adding that sort of growth of something? The council does not have control over, I mean, like salaries. Um, to at least be bounced back to council either for review and input, even if we can't say, no. You have to send it at this, that's not right, so I hope that. I hope that, I hope that this will come to something that will. Prevent future aggravations.
Yeah, as long as that happens and there is something in place, whether it's informal. I'm okay, it's really just the fact that it felt much less. Um.
Yeah.
Comparable to everything else.
It's such a mechanism to be based on a percentage order.
And that's. I feel it's mentioning, okay. Um, the last thing that I'm going to request is, uh. I mean, I just want to say, like, this city is so freaking lucky to have such an active and engaged council that pays attention. That identifies issues and, and potential projects and gives such important the input, like. I have been on council for a long time, and there is definitely periods where we've had fairly lackadaisical or relaxed councils. And this is not this one, and that is both a good thing and a challenging thing, um. I just, I guess what I, what I want to point out is that the city and our city staff are super busy. With both the day-to-day operations and keeping the wheels on the bus, as well as the multiple issues that. That come up, both projects that they have and issues that we just have to deal with. Multiple emails about the post-docs the other day, that sort of thing that you don't anticipate, so please. Have a little bit of grace when bringing up ideas or wanting to give direction about something that. City or staff should be working on or focusing on for us. I do not want these ideas or questions to be lost. Um, but I do want them to fit into the mix in a way that. Does not overburden our staff, and part of my solution is the strategic plan. Where we can keep a running list of like, yes, that is important. It is not a priority right now, but we don't forget about it, and it'll, it'll get its turn, um. So. Please. Please be gracious with the response, you know, I hear you, I'm gonna put it on the list, I'm gonna put it in the hopper. Um, but I may not get to it for a while, okay? I do want to say, though, that another alternative exists, and that is if you have a particular passion project. That does not fall in any of the things that staff is working on right now, and you have the bandwidth. To chip away at it, and specifically, I want to, you know, shout out to council member Thomas and council member Edwards. For the work that they continue to do to try to, um, come up with a, a, a plan to address the drainage issues that we have in the northeast corner of this building. Um, that is an excellent example, because the city is not currently working on that and does not have the bandwidth to currently work on that, and yet. That is a fairly pressing issue, so as always. My figurative door is always open, um, so please call if you want to talk, if you want to get together and talk about anything. Um, you know, I am always molliers for you, okay? That is the end of my report. Counsel reports.
I have two quick things.
Yes.
Uh, Jenny, I mentioned this in the advocate's presentation, but I wanted to. Shout out and thank the city for the donation of the bunk beds. Those were immediately moved to the bridge upstairs and immediately were slapped on. By two citizens that had nowhere to go, so that's just a huge win-win for both of us, and. Hopefully opens up an apartment at the Spruce Street location as well. Um, the other thing I want to shout out is the street department this past week, I don't know if you all have seen them out. Uh, painting yellow lines, clearing out grates, sewer grates, and doing it very, very happily. I have to say, it was just awesome to see them out there doing all that work, so, uh, those are my two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I, uh, stopped by the street department this afternoon and, and caught one of their employees, and I. Wanted to make sure that, that the good words that I pass along from all of you and constituents get passed along, along to them. And it does, so I will definitely pass them along, because, uh, I think sometimes they think all they do is upset people. And I wanted to assure them that, that is not always the case, um, that there, there are a, a lot of compliments that have come their way. I wanted to make sure they get them, so they are. Good news.
Other council reports. Other council reports.
I had a quick quote about the historic preservation commission this last weekend and asked for how to research your historic homes. It was an absolute packed house. I've never seen that many people in this building that weren't there. We should all be very proud of that commission, they're doing really good.
Excellent. I was so sad to miss that. I had a job, but it looked, the pictures in the paper.
I thought we had one chair empty because she's somebody standing up there.
Thank you. Other council reports.
Okay, uh, I would just kinda add on to, um, the discussion about the H P C library presentation on researching historic homes is very well attended. Super impressed and, uh, the people that attended, and I think there were nearly thirty people here, seemed very interested in a follow-on presentation on another topic. So I think H P C is talking about how to take advantage of tax credits for residential property, which I think is just great. Joey and I continued to work on the city hall rehabilitation. We met with the architect last week and walked through the building, thinking about what the priorities should be. And we have a meeting planned now, I think on the nineteenth of June, the civil engineer thinking about what we can get done with the first grant on Tuesday when it's approved and that grant application will open in early August and I'll definitely work. Because it's due on early. And then finally, I attended the county's feasibility study meeting on their I don't even know what to call it, community center, rec center. See, everything center, but not a rec center, my heart's cold like that right now. Uh, and it was, uh, again, well attended, about the same number of people as attended the city's meeting on the, um, community center. Uh, their contractor was there and stepped through what will happen as part of the feasibility study. And I would just really like to encourage the city and the county to work together on whatever the community center is gonna be or the not a rec center is gonna be so that we're not overstepping and come up with something cohesive that we all agree with, that also supports equal. I think there's some confusion right now in the community about which you want. And how it's gonna get funded.
There will always be.
Thanks to Veronica for putting that in the paper. Other council reports.
Um, we just authorities still sorry, uh, regional housing authorities still considering, considering but working actively through the guideline. And lots of good discussions over some of the, uh, differences we're seeing outside of the tier system. Uh, so there's lots of good changes happening, um. I, there is going to be a, uh, another, uh, sales. Oh, my God. Thank you. Then, yes, we are having a meeting soon, so that is moving forward. Uh, we can work in conjunction with P V Swims as we have been to be able to find a solution that fits, addresses all the needs. I'm sorry to hear that you're going through those issues that you are, um. Lastly, uh, the housing commission has a new facilitator, uh, I'll see that hiring person, uh, Cipriano. He's great, he's bilingual and, um, he is new to the position, so not even a community, but new to the position. So Christie will still be doing some uh, work with them, but not that won't be the point person anymore. Please refer to your housing coalition questions to itself as I'm the chair for two. Prefer that it's, if you do have any, I'm happy to work with you. Any needs, so just wanted to let you all know that happened. It's really exciting to keep someone, uh, from our community. Especially from our Latino community, be able to be in that position and really work with us, um, on a solution. So looking forward to that.
Other council reports.
Okay, the, uh, musical was amazing. The high school musical was so fun. And we contributed to that, right? The
Yes, we did.
That was about the fifteen hundred and two.
A thousand.
But it was just so beautiful to see all those community members. And in such a variety of talents from audiovisual to acting and singing and playing music and to create that was really inspiring. We're proud of all, all their efforts and glad that we can support it. Last happy news, um, Bright Star just lost a teacher due to housing. Alright, I don't know the details and it's probably a little more complicated than that, but housing and childcare do intersect and so we just they're moving to Denver.
Okay, last call for council reports. Let's go on to public meetings planner. There it is. Uh, Laura is, um, six on Thursday. Steve, I'll be here at six, would you like to attend? Uh, I have not heard. I know they they put out a kind of like a yes, no sign up for the meeting so that they can establish that, but I've not heard what the results.
Yeah, but if you have an R S T P, please do.
Yeah, that's how that's how they're gonna do it.
Uh, and then they're, sorry, for that one specifically, I mean, I got sent us if you did R S B for bill, well, look, I did, and I'm just checking it out.
Fantastic. Uh, questions, additions, subtractions, other than the Laura board meeting in July is subtracted.
Will Laura meeting be available in person or is it only on Zoom again?
There are, there are always. Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm wondering if in on August thirteenth, could we have the six P M town hall added for, uh, setting city priorities?
Will that be here or?
I'm gonna have it at Frank. It's not August thirteenth at six P M. Um, and and my tentative plan is to hold it at Frank. They have the date open, we're waiting for the contract so we can review it, but.
They are, I've thought about that. When you get that location confirmed, I can send out a calendar. So just.
Open test, okay, true, great.
Cause I know send it any other way, it doesn't end up in my calendar, so no.
Was that a stupid question?
No comment. All right. For this month or for July?
Was it July?
I think it was July. I think this month, I can't remember the date. Yeah, the note that I saw said July, but please double check me on that since the last all right, let me, uh.
Uh, I have the email. Should I talk really? Is, uh, from Adam DeShard. Uh, and we will be skipping into that so our roof and everything is on.
You won't have to, I have something else to add. Authorities meeting will not be, the regional authorities meeting will not be on the nineteenth, it'll be on the twentieth. Is that right?
That's right, we'll be having a meeting further discussing and hopefully come to uh, finalization of our meeting dialogue. And I also have the email and have a chart saying that the June
When was it dated? Cause I, you know what, to tell you the truth to him, I had that impression until I read today's email and then
He sent an invitation to the June eighteen meeting, um, at two fifty P M today.
I, I will reach out to Adam for clarification and maybe you can expect a third email.
Or the email he sent today at two forty, which says, we'll meet on June eighteen. We'll be skipping July, so.
I'll I'll clarify with him tomorrow. Only, only he knows the truth.
Oh, no, you're right. Does say that. We'll meet June eighteen. We'll skip into that. Okay, nevermind.
All right. Okay. Last chance. It is nine oh
Thank you very.
Thank you very much for your perseverance and patience. And Tony says.